Welcome to the Joint City Council and Budget Review Committee Workshop. Today is August 16, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll and please include the Budget Review Committee.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Costin.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
Eight present, Budget Review Committee Member Lorick has asked to be excused, and I will mark him so. Budget Review Committee Member Badlo. Gruber.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
Reagan.
Here.
Shadrack.
Here.
Starner.
Here.
That is five present, one excused, and one absent.
Thank you. Item five is business. Five A is citizens' input time. The maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record, and please, when recognized by the presiding officer, the speaker shall address the city council from a designated lectern, which is going to be the podium to my left, shall state his or her name and whom, if anyone he or she represents.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Budget Review Committee. My name's Richard Jones, and I am the President of the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades, Local 2301, and I represent the general employees here at the city. I'm here again to speak about the budget and the inclusion of moving to the $15 an hour. So, the last meeting a week ago, it appeared the theme was "Many Questions for the Dais," so I think I want to keep with that theme and go with some questions of my own. How much money is being budgeted for the increase to $15 per hour for the general employees? My estimates to do an equitable increase across the entire bargaining unit was $2.4 million, and I'd be curious if the city disagrees with that calculation. When was the last wage study completed for the general employees? What was the estimated cost of implementation of the last pay study, had it been implemented in a manner that would not have created compression issues? What was the cost to implement the wage plan under that study and keep every employee at their current range penetration? What compression issues does management believe were created by the method used to implement the last wage study? Philosophically, do we believe that employees that have been performing a function for the city for a lengthy period of time should be paid the same rate of pay as a coworker that has less experience in the field of work? What actions will be taken to address the compression issues that will inevitably be created or increased if equitable increases across the salary schedule are not implemented? Will council or the city manager commit to not hiring above the minimum of the pay scale as a method to prevent continued inequity for current employees? This last wage study that we did created a mountain of compression. I have 17, 18, 19-year employees that are still sitting at step 10 because when we did the wage study, it cost too much money, and we slid them to the bottom of the pay range. And then we start bringing people in over the minimum of the pay scale, and now they're making the same as that person that's been here for a period of time. I'm asking this council to direct staff or find the money in the budget to ensure we don't make this problem worse. If it's $2.4 million today, and we're not going to finish a wage study for 18 months, what's the cost going to be then? It's either going to be a larger number or increased demoralization of the current employees. Those that fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is George Starner, a 17-year resident of Cape Coral. While I am a member of the Budget Review Committee, I am here today speaking only for myself. My topic today is the impact on the city budget and the taxpayers when comparing the rollback rate versus the proposed rate. The dollar difference for the average homesteaded homeowner is $42 a year. That comes out to $3.50 a month. With $3.50, you can't buy a cup of coffee at Starbucks, but you could put budget software back in the budget. With $3.50, you can't buy a jar of peanut butter, but you could put the crime center back in the budget. With $3.50, you can't buy a movie ticket, but you could keep the aquatic center study in the budget. With $3.50, you can't buy a sandwich at the Pops Cafe, but you could keep all the funding for the Pine Island Road PD&amp;D in the budget. There are many more examples that we could talk about. My point is that during your tenure on City Council, I doubt you will have many more years of real estate appreciation of 28%. Every once in a great while, we have the opportunity to move things from the wish list to the to-do list. Now is one of those times. I don't know what the future holds, but I would hate to look back in two, or four, or six years from now and say, "I wish we had done more when we had the opportunity." Recently, one of the council members talked about still receiving calls about the PST on the first 500 kilowatt hours on the electric bills. You, too, will get calls, letters, and emails about the new millage rate, no matter what that rate is. I believe professionals such as yourselves will be able to explain the need for funds to meet the needs and wants of a city that is growing as fast as Cape Coral. I lifted the following quotes from the Cape Coral Breeze dated last Friday. Some of you may recognize them. Quote, "We should not only recognize our needs of today, but also plan on the needs of the future." Quote, "Bringing people together builds strong foundations." Quote, "Experience as a father of three young children that will be future generation inhabiting and inheriting the city of Cape Coral affected by our decisions today." Please listen to your own words. Without proper funding, the next generation of Cape Coral will wonder, "Why did we not do more?" Please support the proposed millage rate for the future of the city and its next generation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council and Budget Committee Members and City Staff. I'm Tom Shadrack. I am also on the Budget Committee. I feel like I'm going to have a contrarian opinion here, but I'm, you know, I'm just speaking as an individual, not as the Budget Committee. And on the chart, the City Clerk's office has put up some suggestions on how to get to the rollback rate. I mentioned last week when I was here, I might have a dozen for you. I stopped at seven, but, and I've also provided this and some details with a worksheet with financials to the city manager and the finance director for these bullet points. And these are just ideas, and I don't think, as George said, you know, we don't want to cut services. I don't think any of these really do, but it's really just holding accountability and tightening things up and offering some challenges to the management staff. I'll go through these quickly. These are just food for thought. We talked about this last week, the first one. Just reduce, instead of funding at 100%, fund at 98%. We always seem to underrun, and that'll save you, just that 2% will save 4.2 million. The pension fund was interesting. I looked at that, at the CFR. That fund is almost approaching a billion dollars, and it made 146 million in investment gain last year. You know, we're only funding 38 million or so. If you cut that back 15%, and the plan is way overfunded, we're at 90%. And to be a good credit rating, 80% is considered good. And we're at 90% already in funding our complete liability on the pension. So that's another value that could be reduced without hurting anything. It's not lowering pensions, it's just reducing our dollar value that we submit each year. And we made so much last year. The park maintenance budget, it was increased by 3.4 million, if you look at the details. Reduce it back to what's been consistent. I don't, this is comparing budget to budget. This is not knowing what the actuals are that we spend on maintenance, but if you just cut that back, and then, we're currently not, you know, we don't have the Go-Bahn parks available yet, so there's no reason to increase the staff that was budgeted last year, and that's still underrun today, I assume, because those parks aren't available. We got a few minor neighborhood parks coming online this year, but not the major ones. The next one is, you know, you could reduce the two and a half months of reserves that we've all agreed to by 10%. Put it at 2.25, that'd save 4.1 million. And again, these are all, all of these things, if we do get the underrun, that at least I profess that there will be somewhere between 5 and 30 million, we'll, I'll wrap it up. We'll be able to pay any of that back come January or February, any of those reductions we decide today.
Thank you.
Okay. The other two, you can read and make a decision. I hope we get there today. God bless everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good after, well, yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mark Mirth, President of the Cape Coral Professional Firefighters. I just want to object to number two on Mr. Shadrack's recommendations. Listen, you know, the reason we're doing as well as we're doing is because we're making the pension obligations that the fiduciaries put in place, or, excuse me, actuaries put in place, so I'm against that particular recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input, please come forward. See-a-none citizens' input is now closed. Any discussion on citizens' input? Councilmember Tate.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, could you please respond to the Mr. Jones comments? As much as I really don't need to go through it myself, I think whenever accusations are made, and the same with Mr. Shadrack's comments, we have the right to explain and give correct information rather than false information.
Thank you, Councilmember Tate. Members of City Council, I'm going to take a quick stab at some of the comments or questions that I heard from Mr. Jones. He had a lot of them, so I'm going to have Lisa Sinago, the city's HR Director, also come up to the podium to assist me in answering those questions. So, with respect to the $15 minimum salary that the city has established, as I mentioned last, Council, you've given us direction to bring that small sample, I'm sorry, not sample, that small group of job classifications within the city's pay structure to $15 an hour, okay? What it does not take into account is a compression issue. Now, off the top of my head, I remember that the cost associated with just that small group of employees coming up to $15 an hour was relatively insignificant in the grand scheme of the budget. I believe it was something like $10,800, and we accounted for that. The compression issue, which it essentially, if I'm not mistaken, would require all of the job classifications within the general employees bargaining unit to rise, I think it was 4.2%, Lisa, does that sound about right?
Yeah, I think it was 4.21%.
Right. That, the compression issue did have a multimillion-dollar price tag, and so we are not moving forward with addressing the compression issue. We are moving forward with just that small group of employees. Now, I understand that in our charter school system, there are several employees that are also, are paid below the $15 rate, but my understanding...
Is the state of Florida through, I'm sorry, through HB 5001 that established the budget actually provided funding for all schools in the state to go to $15 an hour. So, we received a little bit of funding. Every employee in the charter school system will go to a minimum of $15 an hour.
So, again, we think that getting folks that are currently not at 15 to $15 an hour is being addressed by our respective budgets for FY '23. Now, with respect to a compensation and classification study that is in this year's proposed budget for the general employees to be completed in FY '23, and by the way, you have an ordinance that requires these types of studies to be completed every five years. This past year, we completed it for the non-represented employees. We've also, as part of the collective bargaining, we've done that for the positions in the firefighters' union and also in the, our law enforcement officers' union. So, the only one that is, remains to be completed is generals, and I think that is going to encompass well over 280 different job titles, correct, Lisa?
Yeah.
That we will examine and compare, compared to the market. And then we will bring those recommendations forward at the appropriate time. One other point that I do want to make is, I was reminded by Lisa that my understanding is that the timing of these pay and classification studies were actually negotiated with the union, and they were delayed with the unions, at the union's request, correct?
Yes. When we start negotiations, we decide if we're doing any market studies, et cetera, especially for the, this large group. One, a benchmark study had been conducted around end of 2019, a spot check. It was decided things were pretty close to on, and so when we started, we sat down to bargain in 2020, early, late 2020, early '21 for a 10-121 CBA effective. It was decided not to do a market study at that time, but we knew we'd be doing one in the near future.
I think Mr. Jones also raised the issue of internal pay equity, and specifically, he mentioned that at times, we hire individuals at a starting salary above what other employees may be making in that particular job classification. And I think the answer to that question, or that comment posed by Mr. Jones, I guess is, the best answer I have is that we have to look at each case individually. There are times where we will bring in an individual from outside of the organization, but because of that person's experience, knowledge, and so forth, we will pay them a higher, a higher rate than the, than the starting rate, because they have the experience and background that is commensurate with obtaining a higher salary. Time and grade should not be the only factor that we consider when determining how much an individual makes when, when they're employed with the city. And so Lisa has a staff, a staff that, you know, whose sole job is to figure out what to bring new employees in at when we hire them, but also keeping in mind that internal pay equity is an issue, and that continues to come up. We will, we will address it when all of the factors are equal, but sometimes the factors are not all equal. Lisa, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I had just dotted a few notes as well, and I believe we've covered most of them between the two of us here. One piece as well, to the, to Richie Jones's comment of, there are some individuals that have been here a while and not at the top of their scale. Some of the increases that have been given in the past have been to remain on step, and then a 5%, a 5%, and then sometimes another 5%. So that was through the 14, 15, 16 years, doing some range adjustments. After, the larger Seagull Water Study that Richie Jones is referring to was around the 2014, '15, with implementation over those next four years or so. Spot checks are often done on positions. We just talked about one that was done at the end of 2019. That was a larger benchmark piece, just to see where we were. And the current concept to do the $15 per hour, there's 15 steps. So in the first pay grade, the first four steps, the thought is to move those to get to that 15 and minimize that space in between those steps. And then at step five or so, the, they continue on as is, currently as is. So you get a little tighter at the very beginning when that one pay grade comes in, and then it continues on in that step. The union and the city do know that the next time we sit down to negotiate, we knew that when we finished negotiations, that market studies, et cetera, would be on the table for next time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the comments, and I just had a couple other things. While I appreciate the comments, thank you very much for the 3.50 analyzing that. I thought that was very good. As you know, that's the budget that I'm supporting. And I'm going to talk about this at budget time, but just to address the reserves, I would be frightened at two and a half months' reserves, or two and a quarter months' reserves is now what you've talked about. I just think that everybody's sitting in La La Land here, thinking that we may never have a disaster, and they're right around the corner. For many of these people, I don't know if you survived Charlie, if you survived Derma, if you survived Hurricane Donna, as I did. It's not pretty, and the last thing we want is a city that's not prepared financially to meet the responsibilities of the residents when the government isn't sending their money immediately. Look at Kansas just now. How long are they waiting for funding? And how are they having to pick up the pieces? I'm not prepared to take a risk for $3.50 a month to go to your suggestion for the reserves, and I'm shocked that you would be, too, because you're such a physically supposedly conservative person, and I just don't understand that. So, I'm not going to comment about the rest of it, because I think that you are off on everything, but that just really bothers me, and I'm going to bring it up again when we're discussing the reserves. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. I know Mr. Jones said 2.6 million, you said millions, and is there a way to get, is it 2.6, or is it, is it much more? Is there a way to figure that out? Doesn't have to be right now, but give us an idea.
We'll get that information to you sometime during this workshop. I have it handy somewhere. Again, the, the compression issue is what drives the price tag up considerably into the several million, and I don't remember if it was 2.4 million, but I know, I know it was definitely more than a million and probably less than 3 million to address compression throughout the entire organization when you bring a small group of employees up to $15 an hour.
Yeah, because I know, you know, other municipalities out there are giving bonuses. We talked about something we can do for the city workers who just, you know, completed their, their contract, but we see it out there. The cost of living is coming up, and if we're, if we're looking to find $4 million to get to the rollback rate, which we found, and we stick with the proposed rate, we might be able to take some of those findings of the $4 million and give it to our city workers that are there every day for us and maybe get us closer. So when we do that range adjustment, and in two years, when we go through it again, we're not hit with that sticker shock of, oh, we're so far behind. This might be an opportunity to keep us closer to what we strive for. So I do want that information, to kind of think of that and kick that around a little bit with our discussions here. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from Council? Okay, see-a-none. We'll move on to item 4B, discussion. 4B1 is the FY '23 Proposed Budget Workshop that is continued. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, good afternoon. So we know that developing the municipal budget is one of the most important activities undertaken by the city council. And I want to remind you what the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting says about the budget process. They say that the budget process is not simply an exercise in balancing revenues and expenditures one year at a time, but it is strategic in nature, encompassing a multi-year financial and operating plan that allocates resources on the basis of identified goals. Now, the budget process involves conflict resolution, competition for scarce resources, and developing alternatives and compromises. The key word, compromises. All of the discussions and debates that you have been having as a body, both city council, Budget Review Committee, now together as a joint meeting and with staff, this is all part of the budget development process. It does not point to dysfunction. This is how it's supposed to happen. This is healthy dialogue and healthy debate to ultimately get you to the point where you can achieve compromise, so you can adopt a binding local document, a binding legal document, sorry, sometime in September. The most important part of this entire process is that the budget document is a clear expression of what a community, this community, values the most. It puts, what's that saying? You put your money where your mouth is. That's what the budget process does. Again, it helps identify what are the most important priorities for this community moving forward that warrants an allocation of scarce resources. Mr. Mayor, the information that we have presented to you over the course of several months and what you will hear today in terms of possible approaches to developing a budget, regardless of the millage rate that you choose to accept, whether you accept the proposed rate of 5.5568, or if you decide to adopt the rollback rate, or any other millage rate, for that matter, I want you to know that whatever recommendations we provide you are based on sound budgetary practices that your professionals on staff feel confident in supporting and bringing to your attention. None of our strategies are based on quick fixes, gimmicks, or games. They are truly solutions to arrive at whatever numerical solution you are trying to, to arrive at. So I say all that because we're going to walk you through an exercise. Mark's getting ready to kick it off, and, and I want you to know that we looked over the course of the last several days. We've spent countless hours, war gaming, different approaches in order to bring you back the information that you needed to evaluate whether you want to go back to a rollback rate or not. And so, again, this information, I think we are confident that this is something that, while we don't like to do, we can certainly support, and more importantly, it is a, an approach that is replicated over time, and it is not merely an accounting exercise just to get you to, to the bottom line. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mason, who's going to walk you through this updated information. Thank you.
Mayor and Council Members, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director, as soon as, okay. So while he was doing all that talking, I should have gotten the presentation up and running. And here, I thought it was already up. And here it is. It's up.
He was extremely attentive.
I was riveted. I was, I was riveted. It was riveting. It's, uh, so anyways, to, to begin, as I, as I stated, uh, the, we're here for kind of three discussions. I think that's what we settled on at our last meeting. And so the first discussion will be the one-time funding. Uh, the second one will be a discussion on the general fund, millage rate, and then, uh, next steps. So you, from a, and so to begin with, uh, at the last meeting, I think the decision was to come in with, show me the original proposal for the use of the one-time funds. Show me what we included and show me what we took out and then kind of moved on to the future. Okay, so the grayed-out area is what we originally proposed, what the city manager originally proposed with the city manager's proposed budget of five point five five six eight, which accounted for about a ten percent increase in taxes. And, uh, so I guess it's really up to you now as to, 'cause I think there was going to be some discussion about what you wanted to keep in and what you wanted to take out. And so I can go through the entire presentation and we can talk about that, or we could talk about this now and then come back and finish up the presentation. I think I-
And let's go through the entire presentation, because this is actually connected to the other part of the presentation, so.
It is, 'cause we're gonna suggest something here that, uh, you may wanna consider as we go forward. All right, so at the last meeting, there was, there was commentary about showing me what the total budget was, uh, with the rollback rate versus the proposed rate. So, uh, with this, we're giving you the total budget, which is all funds, uh, to include the general fund at the proposed rate of five point five five six eight and the rollback rate of five point three four six one, I think it is. And so the difference between the two is about four million dollars, which we've had that conversation before, four million dollars. And as a reprisal of the documentation that we provided you last week, uh, we show you that at the two millage rates for the general fund itself, what those, uh, what, what changes we would recommend making as far as a reduction, uh, from the proposed program modifications that were originally included in the city manager's proposed budget. Okay, so then we settled on, okay, bring something back that talks about that bottom number, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars, as it appeared that the city, the, the, uh, city council wanted to put back in all the funding for the police, uh, that was included in the program modification. And so, as the city manager pointed out, we've spent a lot of time and energy and effort to come up with something, uh, that would be a balancing approach for this particular amount. And so we went through, uh, and, and although, you know, this is just one approach, uh, this isn't a recommendation by staff, this is just simply one approach. And, uh, you know, because our recommendation continues to be five point five five six eight. You asked us for an approach, we've given an approach. So in this case, we're recommending that, or, we're not recommending, but we would suggest if there was something that you were going to consider, that we would remove the professional compliance officer from the city, city manager's office. We'd return the museum, museum of history and the cultural arts center back to the original request. Uh, we would remove medians. Uh, this is a, I mean, we have a one-time funding every year to, to, uh, approach, um, economies of scale for doing one mile of medians at three hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year. And if we do the one-time funding for medians or some portion of medians, then, you know, th- this would be something that you could consider. Uh, the alleyway program, uh, same thing, I think, uh, as I was reminded this past week, um, we're gonna be doing the last tranche of alleyways that are currently unpaved. And once that was done, it was my understanding that the city council would, uh, probably not need to put, set aside money every single year for the alleyways. So, uh, this is just one more, uh, item that you can consider if you were, uh, desirous of going back to the rollback rate. Since, you know, all of these numbers don't add up necess- uh, necessarily to nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. We believe that the revenue that will come in from the communication service tax will probably cover this from a practical standpoint. So this is just one simple balancing approach that you might wanna consider, or you can consider other things that you make, have a discussion on later on. Okay, so as the city manager pointed out, you know, the, we, we don't generally budget just for one year. We budget for one year because we're required to by the state of Florida to have an adopted budget, but we also look at future years and what the impact of our current year decisions are on the future years. And so we, as a city, generally take a fairly conservative approach in both the revenue side of things as well as the expenditure side. And so when we're making those, those estimates, uh, we originally looked at four percent, uh, ad valorem growth. And overall, we usually see about a three percent growth in, in, uh, other revenues. And we took that into account and at the, a couple meetings ago, there was a suggestion or a discussion that, well, maybe six percent would be the number. And so we came up with a forecast using the net re- uh, the, a forecast of a six percent increase in ad valorem revenues. And then the last meeting, there was a discussion that, well, maybe it's ten percent. And so we came up with a, uh, a forecast of net revenue, uh, based upon the two values or the two millage rates and what that would mean with regard to the forecasted, uh, revenues at ten percent for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And then we drop it back down to four percent per year thereafter, because the, you know, and anytime you're gonna get beyond one year, it's going to be guesswork anyways. So we've given you an idea of what the overall impact would be, uh, you know, in, in, uh, in looking at future years, whether you're looking at a six percent increase in ad valorem or whether you're looking at a ten percent increase in ad valorem. Overall, you know, the, the, uh, from a forecasting standpoint, we'll still continue to take a conservative approach, because that's the prudent way of doing business. Uh, but at the same time, uh, it gives you an idea of where we would stand if we elected to go forward with this. Now, one of the items that is included in, uh, both the forecast for twenty twenty-four, for both forecasts regardless, uh, would be the two items that the city council moved to twenty twenty-four. That would be J.C. Park at a one point, at two point five million dollars and the golf course design at one point five five zero, uh, one point five five million. So both of those are included in that forecast utilizing current revenues. That has been the, the same thing we've talked about since we had our, uh, June meeting. And each and every successive, uh, time we've come before you, it's been included, except for last time, because I got the impression that you didn't want it in there. And then we kind of sat back and said, wait, wait a second. We're gonna need some consistency here somewhere. So we put it back in. And if the city council wants us to take it out and consider it with one-time money, then we'll take it out. And each one of those numbers would, for twenty twenty-four, would be reduced by four million, five, fifty thousand dollars.
Could you repeat what you just said about the, you put it back in?
We put it back in for both, uh, for twenty twenty-four, for both of these scenarios. So you, you needed to know that. And I didn't want you to think that, you know, there's, the, if you looked back at the last week's number, they would be different, because they would be. Uh, but in this particular ca- circumstance, if you look over on the right under five point five five six eight, you see that four million, fifty thousand dollars. That's the amount for, uh, both, uh, the J.C. Park as well as the design for the golf course. So if you take that out, in both cases, you would reduce by four million dollars. And yes, at ten percent increase in revenue, under the rollback rate, you would see a potential of, uh, a green number if you took out the four million dollars. Uh, but you'd still see red from each year thereafter. Now, I don't, you know, for, for me, I don't know what we're, you know, I mean, I think we're not gonna see, I don't, ten percent seems like a, uh, I don't know that I, me personally, I would be looking at a ten percent increase in value for next year. So that, that, you know, that, this is what we have today, uh, but I wanted to make sure and very clear that what's included in these, in these for, in these forecasts. And if you want us to take out the four million dollars, then we'll, we'll send you a new sheet and, and, you know, if that's what you want us to do. Give you an idea of what the numbers are, show you what the, what they are. At six percent increase, does, it's, you're still gonna be a negative, uh, number upfront. At the ten percent ad valorem, if that comes to pass, it would in fact be in the green for twenty twenty-four. Whoops, I went by one. All right, so this is just a reminder of what the, of what the impact is to the average homesteaded property owner. The average homesteaded property owner is at two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. We've calculated that based upon the information we've received from this, from the, uh, property appraiser's office as of July one, uh, which would be appropriate based upon the number of homesteaded property owners we have in the city. And that's just not single-family properties, that's all homesteaded properties. That would be multifamily, that'd be condo, it'd be everything. So everything is included in this. The, uh, the annual impact would be the eighty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cent savings, and the proposed budget, uh, would be eighty, forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. And a monthly basis, that comes out to seven hundred and thirty, seven dollars and thirty-two cents and three dollars and eighty-two cents, uh, respectively. Uh, that, we're, we're putting the monthly impact in here, 'cause they, I, there, we had a question from somebody that thought the annual was a monthly impact. So we wanted to make sure that we separated it out and showed what the numbers were. And last but not least, we have next steps. Uh, again, we have another BERT workshop, if the city council desires it, on, uh, August twenty-third. And then we have a first hearing, uh, to set the tentative millage rate and the tentative budgets on September eighth at five oh five P M. And then September twenty-second, uh, the final public hearing for the millage rate, as well as the final budget, uh, presentation, uh, or the final budget for, at five oh five P M. as well. So, and for me, that's, now we're at question time.
Just real quick, before we get into our discussions, so my memory serves me correctly, let's talk about the meeting improvements that we, uh, had put in the budget from when we first developed the budget to where we are today. Is, my understanding, we, uh, originally, uh, we've always had the three twelve in there. That's been a standard since I've gotten here in two thousand and seventeen. Last year, I believe, we added an additional two million dollars in FY twenty-two budget.
You did?
And this year, um, the clarity that I need, uh, because we threw in the four intersections of two million dollars, did we also have the other two million? Because I thought I had asked this question early on in the budget process, that two million for that, those four intersections were over and above the two million and the three twelve that we had? Is that a, is that a correct statement?
Okay, so if you go back to this particular page here, um, the original proposal was two million dollars for the intersections, for the intersection improvements along with the ma- I mean, the masked arms weren't included in this. It was just, you know, median improvements as well as, um, improvements for these four, four-way areas. At the June workshop or the June retreat, you had us remove the two million dollars for the medians and put two million dollar, I mean, sorry, two million dollars for the, for the, uh, intersection improvements and replace it with two million dollars for median improvements. So-
It's the same dollar, we just reclassified it.
You just reclassified it from, uh, the intersection improvements to median improvements, correct?
And then at some point, um, we took that out completely?
No.
Because the reason that I ask is you're taking the three twelve out. So you're still leaving the two thousand, but you're taking the three twelve out? Is that what I'm understanding here?
The three twelve is funded by current revenues. The two million is funded by the one-time reserves. So that, that's the differential between the two. And so we would just say, I mean, in order to achieve a goal of, of, of rollback for, by the, by the council, uh, we would rec- I mean, this is one suggestion to remove the three twelve, yes.
Okay. All right, I understand. And I'll save the rest of my questions. So I'll open it up, uh, for the council, uh, you know, for any questions or any comments that you may have. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. Um, I thought we had a consensus la- last meeting that we were, you've been looking at reducing the Pine Island Road P and E, P D and E, and including some of these that were removed, and that we would see a chart with that today. So we would have further discussion on finalizing these, uh, one-time expenditures, but I'm looking at the exact same chart we saw last week. So did, did we not work on what we could move around for this presentation? Or-
We didn't. What we're, we're hoping that we can get from you is that, you know, what do you wanna add back in if we take the two and a half million dollars out? I don't know that we settled on that.
No, you had mentioned that there was something else at the end of the presentation that you were gonna possibly-
Oh, as far as these funds are concerned?
-suggest, and that's the reason why we didn't do any of this. So I'm just curious what that is.
Oh, yeah, the other thought with regard to this?
Well, I assume the reason why you didn't do any of the changes we asked is because you had another thought you wanted to kick past us. So I'd like to hear that.
Yes, thank you. Well, one other, uh, consideration is, is that, uh, with basically reducing the overall, uh, millage rate down to the rollback rate, and in other words, we'd be collecting the same level of revenue, uh, against, you know, whatever increases that we've had in this particular year, uh, that we need to be prepared going into the future about, you know, with, with having sufficient reserves aside, set aside to potentially cover any future losses that we, or any future, uh, downturn that we may, we may, uh, we may see. And so we would suggest that, you know, or, you know, the potential is, is for you to use this sixteen point nine eight eight million dollars and set it aside for reserves, and that will help potentially cushion any, any, uh, resulting issues that we may see in the future.
Okay.
It's just an option. It's, again, it, these are different options that are available to you.
Yeah, I mean, looking at what we're removing to get down to the millage rate, I know we're doing some, uh, we, you know, we pretty much have it down to nine hundred and seventy-eight if we remove all this other stuff. But I'm looking at some of this other stuff that we didn't really bring up last week by going to this rollback rate. And, um, to me, the first year of fiber optics install is just as important. I also think that the Pops Cafe restaurant coordinator is very important, 'cause I just found out today that there is only one full-time position. It wasn't the full-time position person that I thought. It's someone that's in Parks and Rec that handles the management, not anyone that works in there. So with the amount of food and what they do at Pops Cafe, I think that is very important. And to me, I would want to see that Pops Cafe, uh, worker become a full-time position, because she does a lot in that kitchen. And she's there every morning and she's making food for half the city. So to just say, oh, I wanna cut that position to save everyone three dollars a month, I, I can't support the, the rollback rate. Uh, the professional standards officers, uh, stuff like that, they're back in, but the compliance officer is also something important. You know, the his, the, all these things that we found are things that are important. And also the, what I brought up earlier, if we're searching for four million dollars to save everyone three dollars a month, I'd rather be searching for two million dollars to make sure our city workers are still able to afford to live in the city. Because to me, that's more important than hitting the rollback rate. So I, I haven't seen anything here again yet today to change me off the proposed budget, but I would like to dig deeper in the budget to find the things that the city needs. So my question, Mr. Mason, is one that, um, Mr. Shadrack, we, his very first one, funding the, uh, hundred percent of the, uh, salaries to ninety-eight percent. And what you're-
I, I think I mentioned, I'll take a stab at that.
Okay.
I mentioned, um, in a response at our last workshop, that that calls for basically budgeting for attrition. I, I find that practice to be, um, restrictive, uh, in, in nature, and that, you, you have to apply it essentially across the board. And so, uh, again, I, I, I mentioned that our recommendations are based on sound budgetary practices as opposed to what I consider to be gimmicks. And I think that budgeting for attrition, um, is, is a gimmick. I'd rather not budget for a position, not included in the budget, um, than budgeting a certain percentage of a full-time position.
Okay, I remember, but it didn't, when I saw the numbers, it didn't quite click at that time. So, um, I'm, I'm still where I'm at, the, the five-point, the, the proposed rate, and hopefully trying to find some way to get the city workers, uh, even with some sort of, or, or get started on that now. You know, looking into what it's gonna take to- You know, looking into what it's going to take to get everyone, even with the compression. But I'd prefer to work on these parking lot items today and at least get them figured out and see a different chart. So, like I said, I'm for the main rate, which means we don't have to cut these parking lot items. We need the city to stay moving forward, and we should just fill these out, figure out what we want to do to move the city forward, and be done with this meeting today. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can just respond to something, because you did mention the compression, and I have the figure for all funds, not just the general fund. For all funds, it's 2.7, almost 2.8 million to deal with the compression issue in the general union.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I have a question about what we're looking at on the monitor. On the second column, the included column, at the very bottom, it says the same number as the original column, and I'm sure that's a mistake. Is it supposed to be closer to 11 million?
No, it should be the same number. In this particular circumstance, the original proposal was 16,988. The City Council kept with the 16,988, and at the budget retreat, added the items in green. And in order for us to, you know, we had to go back and change something in the items in gray in order to maintain the same number in the included column. So, right now, as far as the proposed budget is concerned, at 5.5568, that included column is what is included in the budget today.
In the five, in the proposed millage, not the rollback?
Yes, either way, it doesn't make any difference, proposed or the other, yes.
Just wanted to clarify that, and I still stand where I stood last week and the week before. I think the proposed rate is the only way to go if we want to be fiscally conservative. I think it'd be foolish to, anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Couple of questions I had, looks like the PD&E study is still in here, the 4.5, that's correct?
It is, and it, there was discussion last week about reducing it 2.5 million, and there was a lot of different ideas about what to do with that 2.5 million. But at this point, we want, we want it from all of you to tell us what you want to do with that. And we can, we can do that. It's, you know, whether you reduce it by, you know, the, for 16,988 down to, by $2.5 million, or you leave the 16,988, and we add some of the items that were removed back in. There was a suggestion by the mayor to add back in the 664 for the police, there was others, but it, we left it in here just simply because we're not at a point where to, if staff moves everything around, y'all might not agree with our recommendations or how we get to that $2.5 million.
Quite frankly, I thought that's what last week to this week was, is to come up with some alternatives so we could get to the rollback rate. And I know that you presented some examples of that, but I thought one of the big things that I took away from last week, I thought there was a fair consensus from all of us to reduce the PD&E study at least in half. So, that would have freed up, you know, $2,250,000. But we don't see that here today. But if you look at the information that we do have here today, if you go down programs, modifications, or adjustments that we would have to take out to get to the rollback rate, remove the senior management analysts, of course, that's a reoccurring cost, we know, because that is a position. And then, remove the first-year fiber optic install. We do know that that's a multi-year project, but I still see that as a one-time expense for this year. Remove employee celebration programs. To me, that's a one-time expense. CMay fellowship program, quite frankly, I did read your email, Mr. City Manager, on that particular program. I do have a few more questions that maybe this week we can get together. I'm not 100% sure on that program. Looks like that we, that we invest in a particular, into that program, we identify an employee, they go through that process, and there's a dollar amount. And I'm sure that's a, I don't know how long the program is, if it's a reoccurring cost. So, I do have some more questions before I fully understand that particular program. Awards in furniture, of course, that's a one-time expense of the $133,000. The Pops Cafe restaurant coordinator, and reduce two detectives, four patrol officers, and two professional standards, and all of that, looks like in the victim assistant advocate is $978,000. You know, one of the first things that I would have liked to see today is take the $2,250,000 out of the PD&E study and apply it to some of these one-time expenses that we have listed here. You know, additionally, some of the things that I don't think that we've seen quite yet, and I understand that, and I agree, that we should, we should budget our employees at 100%. I understand why we do that. But on the flip side of that coin, what we have to do is recognize that there's always going to be monies left over at the end of the year, because we did not fulfill 100% of those positions throughout the year. We do know that there's, you know, several openings, almost up to 200 openings that we have now, so we have to recognize there will be a savings at the end of this year. Additionally, we know there's going to be savings in the overall budget. You know, so, one of the things that, for me, I'm looking at is, a lot of these programs at one-time expenses, I'm pretty confident that once we get the end-of-the-year actuals, we're going to see a substantial savings because of what we didn't spend throughout this fiscal year. And what I would like to see us do as a council in November is to take a look at these parking lot items, and any items that maybe we cut from the budget to get to the rollback rate, because I'm pretty confident that a majority of those items will be able to add back into the budget. The numbers will be there, I'm pretty confident of that. You know, if you look over the last three years' budgets, not that we'll probably have that amount of money, but we've had over $75 million left over on the plate the last three years in our budgets. When you look at the nine-month actuals, I think compared to some of the nine-month actuals that we've had in the past, there's still going to be a substantial savings at the end of the year. Also, so that's kind of how I'm moving forward, you know, some of these items, if we happen to take out, if you even go with the items that staff has presented today of the $978,000, I think a lot of those items, we will be able to add back in to the budget, once we see the actual numbers, which we should have those by November, since our budget ends in, into September. So, I think there's still plenty on the plate, there's plenty of money to come. So, for me, I'm not going to get focused where this is the end result, because I know it's not. As far as the parking lot items, if you want to have that discussion today, that's fine, but for me, I know that we're going to have a discussion probably in November. And I think from here on, it would be a good practice for this council, not only this budget cycle, but for budget cycles to come, no matter who sits here in these seats, that in November, they should look at the actuals and see how much money's there, and direct the city manager where to put those monies. In the past, we've just kind of put them in fund balance, and throughout the year, the city manager has presented various items that wasn't in the budget, and a lot of the times, it's brought out of fund balance to pay for those items. I think as a council, that's our responsibility in November to see, hey, what is the balance of our checkbook? And what monies are left over? And with that, where do we want to put that money? And I think a lot of the things that we may cut in this year's budget or future budgets, we can go back and revisit those items, because I think with the monies that may be left over on the plate, we'll be able to utilize. One of the other things that we, you know, and I know I mentioned this before, that we still haven't talked about in any great detail, is we know that we had taken the $10.9 million out of the parks for the yacht club, and we moved it over to the remaining parks to pay for the overages that we are expecting to be in about that amount. And we talked about, once we do decide the direction that the yacht club is going to go into, which I don't think we really have a clear understanding at this point, we'll have those discussions later on, exactly what the dollars amount, what the expense is going to be, and what direction we're going to go in. But I think that, at first, we were going to use the monies that we had left over in FEMA money, and a little over $3 million that we had in the properties that we sold to date. So, that's a little over $13 million. I haven't heard that much discussion on those monies either. We do know that we have some big sales that appear to be coming before us here soon with Seven Islands, Academic Village, so there's another pot of money that we haven't really talked about up to this point. I do believe there's a lot on the table still that we haven't even talked about in any great detail, that's just kind of hanging out there. So, in order to get to the difference between the rollback rate and the 5.5 rate, even with the cuts that are outlined here, and I'm not saying that I agree with all those cuts, but the dollar amount's still the dollar amount in order to get to the rollback rate. Whether we use the cuts that are outlined in the city manager, again, we still got the PD&E study, if, you know, that's hanging out there, that I wish was on the table to give us a better understanding, but we don't have that. But I know that's just one big, that's $2.2 million sitting there in itself. So, my position really hasn't changed. I think that if you look at some of the positions that we had budgeted last year, I think where we're going to have some savings is in the parks, you know, because of where we find ourselves out with some of the park improvements that haven't come forward. We budgeted last year for an increase of parks maintenance employees, we're not going to be utilizing those. I'm not sure, we've rolled some of those into this year's budget. I'm not sure if we're going to get all of our parks completed by the end of FY '23. My guess would be not. So, even those employees will have a savings next year, maybe in November of next year, when we're looking at those actuals. So, for all of those reasons, my position hasn't changed. I think there's plenty of money on the table. I do appreciate Mr. Mason bringing the prospective forecast at 10%. I appreciate that. And if you look at those numbers by doing that, there is a substantial difference between the two scenarios that was forecasted. And I do believe, and when you look at FY '23, '26, and '27, a 4% increase, I know we've done that in the past, but we've always found ourselves with a much higher growth than just a 4%. I think we'll see that into the future as well. So, for all of those reasons, my position really hasn't changed. I'm still for the rollback rate. I think we can go there and then revisit what our actual numbers are in November, and I think we will not only get back to where we are at the 5.5, I think we'll even do more. So, that's my, that's my opinion on that. So, thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I agree as well. I mean, when I went through this and thought about this, I really think we have some opportunities. I know that a year or so ago, or maybe a year and a half ago, we'd even talked about looking at possibly offloading the DND property that we have in Mount Lachey, given the annexation issues, and that's a huge opportunity. I don't know what that's valued at. I know initially it was valued at around $3.6 or $7 million, so I'm sure that value's gone up. I would say, you know, that's definitely a property that we could offload, that has a lot of value, I'm sure, especially now. I also think that with Academic Village coming on, that we are looking to sell in Seven Islands, that would give us some revenue opportunities. And I also remember saying about the parking lot items a couple of meetings ago, that maybe we should pause on those. And I do agree, I think that because we do a pretty good job of managing this budget, we are going to have some, some cost savings in our expenses and additional revenue generations. I just feel confident that we will. We did this year, we didn't spend all the money, and I think that's great. But I really think we have, we have an opportunity to go back to the rollback rate, especially this year. And I think that if we just pause on these parking lot items, and then we see how we are after the first quarter or second quarter, then we could look at making budget amendments, have a council meeting, talk about adding these parking lot items back, and do that based on a consensus of priorities. So, everybody, you know, we prioritize which ones we want to do first, second, and third, and then we reach consensus here as a group to be able to accommodate that. But I still am very confident that this rollback rate can definitely be achieved, and I don't think we'd have to cut very much. I think we would just need to pause on these parking lot items, and looking at some of the recommendations that you gave, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Mason, in terms of what you all recommended that we, that we take out of the budget. You know, I agree with the alleyways. I know that when we met today, Mr. City Manager, you talked about over $1 million in a fund that we could actually utilize for those alleyways, so that would save $500,000 out of the, out of the budget, and we would still have that additional funding to be able to handle that.
1.5 million, which I think was the cost to complete our alleyway paving program.
Right.
So, I think that that's covered in its entirety.
Perfect, and so if we took that 500 and something out, that gives us half a million. If we pause on these parking lot items, that gives us several million. And then, if we look at the additional sales coming online from Academic Village, Seven Islands, and possibly looking at DND, I think we've more than achieved it, so.
Let me just caution you on relying on funds from those, the sale of those particular properties, because those are complicated. They have very lengthy timelines, and with respect to Seven Islands, we have completed negotiations with Seven Islands. However, we don't close on the sale of the property until they complete the entitlement process, which we know takes a long time to get permits from Army Corps of Engineers, could be anywhere from, you know, 18 months to two years. So, I would caution you on counting on that money from Seven Islands. Academic Village, we still haven't made a decision yet. I'm hoping to get the recommendations from the evaluation committee soon. So, that process, I don't think will take as long as Seven Islands, because I don't think that there are any permitting-related issues associated with that. So, conceivably, you could have a quick closing on Seven Islands. And then, DND, you know, we have to get an appraisal, that's going to be at least four months, so I would be a little cautious about counting on any money from DND. And plus, keep in mind, we did get a grant from the state to design the new boat ramps, and so, if we decide that we're not going to move forward, we may be in a position where we may have to pay that grant back.
Yeah, either that, or we could, we could utilize it and fix it and then sell it. I don't know, it's just an option. But I understand what you're saying, it's time-consuming, and it takes time. I just know that, you know, I just think with, especially when we talked about the PD&E for Pine Island Road, you know, cutting that in half, you know, that gives us 2.5 million. So, I just think we have opportunities, and I would really like to see us stay with the rollback rate, at least this year, while our property values are so high. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tate?
Thank you. I'm just heartened to hear all of you talk about sales of properties. We've worked so hard to get these properties, and now all of a sudden, you want to sell them. And you know, one thing you learn in real estate is you never spend a dollar until you're at the closing table and you have the check in your hand. So, for all of you that say, we're going to close on this one, we're going to close on this one, you really do not know what is going to happen. I sent you all today a bunch of... I sent you all today a bunch of facts and figures about multiple listings, I don't know if you got it, but the picture is not as rosy as all of you continue to paint. I am not moving off the 5.5. I know that that's going to cause everyone problems, but to sit here and tell me that you're going to work it out and then November, well, I'm not going to be here in November, and I want to know that I did the right thing for the city while I'm here, not when I'm watching you guys on TV. So I want to, I want to do what's right for the citizens now. Things that we can't talk about, you know, legal issues that are coming up, properties that we still have to purchase, suits that we still have to settle. Entergov, are there 26 people that we're going to hire in the budget?
They're, they're in the budget, but not in the general fund.
Not in the general fund. So we have so many things. We're going to bring on another person, I'm sure if you read the Plant Moran study. Tyler, somebody's going to have to come in to help us implement that. Do we have that in the budget? All we're doing is, is bringing back the rollback rates so we can live like paupers almost. We're a, we're a thriving city that has needs. Everywhere you go, we're, we're making the top 10 list. Do we want to be a top 10 list that says, "Well, we can't supply this to our residents because we had to save that $3.50 a month?" I think your residents would say, "Please, give it to us." Where's the boat ramps? They're not in this list. In the list of have-nots and haves, or the wants and needs, this special parking lot list, the budget software maintenance, that's finance, right? So we're going to cut that out. That makes no sense to me, unless you really don't need it, Mark. I don't know, but it sounds to me like if you asked for it, you probably do need it.
We need it. I think if we
I would think that you do, a city this size, growing as fast as we do, we need it. So I, I don't see this tit-for-tat. You know, we're going to sell a piece of property, we're going to save money, and we're going to put it here. I don't see that. I see Entergov is needing much more money than we have in the budget, probably, just to get it to be working properly. The tree canopy, I mean, there are little things in here. The only thing I heard today that we talked about last week was the 2.5 million dollars for the Pine Island PD and E road study. And I believe either you misunderstood us, or you didn't quite get it, but I think all of us walked in here thinking that 2.5 million dollars would be somewhere else in the budget. But still, it's only 2.5 million dollars. It's half of what this 4 million is that we've been talking about since the beginning of time with this budget. So I am still right where I was, and I'm sorry, but I just don't see us looking to future revenues to figure out this budget. Yes, I think you're going to have savings come November. Yes, I think you might sell Academic Village, but until it's sold and closed, I don't know for sure if you're going to or not. So I can't bank on that. I got to bank on what's in front of me. I'm at 5.5.
Councilmember Cosd, have you already spoken?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have Councilmember Long, Councilmember Shepherd, and Hayden that need to speak first before we go to our second round. So whomever would like to speak first out of those three. Long, Hayden, and Shepherd.
Turn your mic.
I've pretty much said everything the last couple of weeks. I was thinking yesterday about a way to maybe approach this differently. Because one thing I have a lot of experience of, probably more so than anybody, is looking at infrastructure issues, looking at water quality issues, looking at environmental issues, looking at attainable housing issues, because of what I did in my previous job, where I met with countless experts, scientists, other knowledgeable people on what we're going to need. And from all those discussions, even with the discussions from the environmental groups like Insurven Sea of Southwest Florida, the Colusa Waterkeeper, Captains for Clean Water, pointing out the needs that we're going to need as a region and as a community moving forward. This is exactly why we have to get out of looking at our city through a two- or three-month window. For the life of me, I can't understand why the four of you continue to look at this city as though we're depressed, you know, that we have no room to become the influential, valued city that we all strive for. You know, we are in a position now to not look at these cuts that affect our future in a one-year cycle, but to plan it out the right way. And you're not doing that. And, you know, I, you know, I, I wish I could find a way, and apparently I'm not smart enough to come up with the right words to show you that what you're doing is completely wrong for the future of our city. And I hope one day in the future that you'll understand that what was being said today over the last few weeks by those that really understand the importance of what vitality means, what following a purposeful strategic plan means for our future, you know. Until we start doing that, these same discussions are going to continue every year. And there is no way I'm moving off the 5.5, the proposed rate, and nor will I, because, you know, the future of this city is a lot more important to me than what you all are attempting to count on. I would like to ask Mr. Mason to possibly address at some point some of the mayor's comments about this future money that we're going to have through the actuals and what that means, you know. I don't agree with it, it's difficult to count on. Councilmember Tate, you're right, to start counting on money from Seven Islands, Academic Village, whatever it might be, when, you know, there's other expenses we're going to have to look at, even if we, if we do get that money going down the road. So once we're all said and done, I'd like at least Mr. Mason or the city manager to address this so-called future pot of money and how that impacts where we might move forward. Thanks, Mayor.
So, do you want me to enter this question?
Sure.
So Mark and I will take a stab at, at the answer. So what the mayor is referring to is the end-of-year fund balance for fiscal year '22, which is the year that we're in now, that ends September 30th. Typically, you will end the year up with some fund balance, right? Because you know that we don't, we budget at 96% of revenues. Sometimes we come in at 102% of revenue. So right there, you've got a 6% difference in the amount of revenue that you generated over, over the year that you did not spend. Normally, departments come in at about, if they spend their budgets properly, they're going to come in at around 95 and 98% of their, their budgets for expenditures. So you may end up having a small percentage left over. So you combine the two of what you didn't spend versus, and you add that with the amount of revenue that you received and you didn't budget for, you're going to end up the year with some extra, some extra money. And the mayor is correct, that money is available to be allocated for, for any purpose. You can leave it in the, in the, in the fund balance, which will go into the, the reserve, or you can allocate it to a specific purpose. And typically, what, what we've been doing, I know since I've gotten here, is that we've been doing now four budget amendments throughout the year. And your first budget amendment that you do following the end of a fiscal year, not quite November, I think we target for like December, correct, Mark?
November. We're required by November 30th.
Okay. By November 30th, we bring you a budget amendment so we can close out fiscal year '22. So you will have the opportunity, if we have those, those funds available, and right now we can't, I think Mark has just thrown out a number, maybe somewhere around the 5 million dollar range, we don't know for sure, but whatever that number is, Mr. Mayor and members of city council, you will have that opportunity to recognize and appropriate those revenues so we can close out FY '22. Did that help? Councilmember Hayden?
We had a discussion yesterday about what that might mean for the future and drawing on what could be considered a deficit moving forward. So can, can you address what possibly spending that money now, whatever it might be, could mean for, for future years?
So if you spend the, I assume you're referring to the 16.9 million?
Well, no.
And one-time money?
No, I'm referring to what you just talked about.
The fund balance for FY '22?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't allocated that yet because we haven't closed the year out.
Right.
And so what you can do is, let's say, if you are projecting deficits in later years, if you, when you close out your, this fiscal year, and we have a positive, we end the year with a positive fund balance, then you can just simply move that money to reserve and, and have that reserve on hand to help cover any deficits in the future, right? And I think Mr. Mason alluded to that earlier when he mentioned a, a possible scenario for the 16.9 million dollars and all of those one-time expenditures, is that, you know, you're not forced to spend that money today. Again, you could always just continue to hold that in reserves and use some of that money to cover deficits in the future. Now, that's not something that staff advocates, because of course, what we say is current revenues must equal current expenditures. However, you can use rollover funds to fund ongoing expenditures under state law, but it is not a budget practice that we recommend. It's not a best practice.
Thanks.
Thank you. We got Councilmember Long, Councilmember Shepherd, whoever wants to go next.
Yeah, I'll just say real quickly, I think I've already spoken at length about my position, so I don't want to reiterate that here again, just for the sake of talking. I'm going to stay at the rollback for now, but I did also want to thank staff, city manager, Mr. Mason and his staff for their ability to continue to work with the parameters that we provided them and come up with different opportunities. So they've been great through this whole process, and I just wanted to thank them for all their work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I'm going to stick with the rollback.
Okay. Councilmember Cosd, you're up next.
Real quick, I, I'm not comfortable funding recurring expenses with one-time revenue, and that's what we talked about. Well, we didn't, I, I heard people talking about that today, the Academic Village, the Seven Islands. I just don't think it makes sense financially, it's not a best practice, as the city manager said. And I'm also not comfortable planning on spending the overage from fiscal year '22 when we don't even know what it is yet. I think it will be great when we come to that time, but right now, I don't think in this budget, we should be talking about that, because it has nothing to do with the fiscal year '23 budget. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on studies and strategic planning, and ULI came, and I just don't know why we put resources into that when we aren't going to align our priorities and our budget with our strategic plan priorities. I just, I don't think we should even be spending money on these things anymore if we're not going to follow the recommendations. So again, you know where I stand. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. Couple things. Miss City Attorney?
Mayor.
If we are stuck, even through all this process, where we're at, at 4.4 when it comes to the millage rate, ultimately what happens? I know you said it'll be a long night, but what if that long night turns into a morning?
We are researching that topic, as it seems like it has become more of a reality.
Okay. My other question, maybe Mr. City Manager or possibly Mr. Ilchizen, the alleyway funding. We only had 1.5 million in that. I believe we approved to use reserves on the other 1.5 that we needed for the full 3 million. Is that correct?
I've got to defer to Mr. Ilchizen. I thought it was a million and a half that was
Because I know we dipped into the reserves to finish the project and get it done.
I think the total cost is an estimated 3 million. I'm pretty sure Mr. Ilchizen can, you know, identify that, and I think a million and a half is coming out of reserves.
Yeah, I don't have the specific number now, I can, I can look at it, but the direction at the last meeting that we had with city council was not to do a capital improvement assessment on the property owners, was to fund it out of reserves.
Okay.
If you want to get the exact number, I have to go back and see where we're at with that.
So then I would not be a, a fan of removing the 500,000 dollars that's in there for alleyway paving, because we took money from the reserves. We'd probably have to refund that account, or at least bring, keep that account going, because there's going to be alleys that constantly will have to be resurfaced. So I don't want to use that as an option to get to the rollback rate.
There is an alternative, Councilmember, and I'm sorry if I'm interrupting you.
That's fine.
So the, the 520,000 dollars is in the general fund. Perhaps in future years, you do have access to gas tax revenues that you can, and we fund repaving through gas tax, and perhaps that we just simply add the alleyway paving program to our overall paving program and fund that out of gas tax rather than general fund.
Yeah, and then last week, we also talked about using the gas tax to fund the PD and E, and I was against that as well, because generally, we use the gas tax to help fund the UEP. So I'd like to continue that process and that, and that program with that, because it is, as time goes on and we get the UEP in those areas, is when we're going to need those roads to be fixed. So to me, that's best practice in using the gas tax for that, and not trying to find other ways to save 500,000 dollars in a budget just to hit a rollback rate. I am not, 100% not wanting to push the one-time expenditures from the unassigned fund balance to later than November. Like Councilwoman Tate said, she's been here, she's not going to be here, she's got programs she wants to see go through. I've got programs that I want to see go through. If I could ask Chief Sizemore to come up and explain the crime center equipment and construction, and what that means to the police, and how long he's been waiting to do that.
Start with Chief Sizemore.
Good afternoon, Anthony Sizemore, Police Chief. Last question, we've been realistically trying to get this implemented for about four years. We've tried the legislative route with no success. It's made it through committee, through both houses, was most recently vetoed by the governor himself.
Twice, correct?
Twice. We've tried it through the budget process, this would be another shot at it. Quite frankly, of the larger agencies in Southwest Florida, we're the only one without one, and it limits our ability to connect and to work seamlessly, if you will, with other agencies. We're at the point now where I'm going to be robbing Peter to pay Paul with other initiatives within the building. I can't wait for overages at the end of the year, I can't wait for November. I'm kind of waiting to hear what happens at the end of this process, and either take what's allocated in this budget, or we will be reducing from other areas in the police department to proceed.
Thank you, Chief. So to me, that means I don't want to put this unassigned fund balance to the side. There's things here that we need. There's here, things here that can better the city, that could give the city, as Councilwoman Tate said, this is what's going to bring us into a top 10 city, when we're already eighth largest in population. We need to back that up with how our city looks. So since it seems we're all still stuck on the millage rate, I'd at least like to hammer out the one-time expenditures, and I put some numbers together that I'd like to share with everyone, and if we agree, then maybe we can all agree on something. So if we, since we all kind of said we could do half of the PD and E study, that would leave us 2.25 million dollars left.
Bobby, can I ask a question about that?
Go ahead.
Well, didn't, last week, we said that you, you and the mayor, the city manager and the mayor were going to talk to the county about splitting that with us? Did you get to do that, or is that yet to come, or?
No, I believe
Next week, there's our meeting.
Well, it would be great if we had that information. I know they would have to vote on it, but, you know, at least if we knew that.
Well, that's why I'm proposing we don't fund it fully at 4.5 million.
Yeah, but that's just information that we talked about
Yeah, so
Thank you for allowing me to ask that.
Mm-hmm. So if we reduce it to the 2.25 million, and I look at what's been removed, we can put everything back in, except for the intersection improvements. And if we put everything back in, aside from park, okay, aside from parks and rac- intersection improvements, but if you add everything else up, it improvements, but if you add everything else up, it gives you about, costs about $1.67 million or, yeah, $1,677,000 is what you get adding those all together. And if you do that difference between the 2.25 million, we could use the $400,000 difference there or roughly, I'm just going to throw basic numbers out, and put it back into the parks and rec renewal replacement. Project Sparkle would then be funded again, and we give them a total of around $1 million to do the replacement and renewal, which we need. Our parks are what we're adding. We need to show something to the residents that their money and their GO bond isn't just for new parks, but they're, we're making them look good. Because I'm not going to see Yellow Fever Creek. You know, that's almost a half an hour drive for me, depending on the time of day. You know, once it's done, it'll be great. But, you know, I'm going to see is the BMX, I'm going to see everything that's close to my house and seeing the improvements there and taking my niece and nephews to the parks and having them clean, having the landscaping, everything up to par. That's the impact that's going to make on every resident. So as far as the one-time expenditures, I'd like us all to agree, maybe going with I'm proposing here, and it's going to make everyone up here know that what we do and the reason why we're sitting here is actually going to improve the city. And when I campaigned two years ago, I said I want to see the city move forward, and this is having, helping the city move forward. It's not keeping money in the bank, it's not reducing a millage rate to where we can't spend this money because we're afraid that we're going to be operating in the negatives over the next four years. So again, I'm set on the proposed rate, but I'd like all of us to maybe talk about these one-time expenditures and at least get that settled. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I did. One thing we didn't do last week is, we probably should have some discussion about it, is Budget Review worked really hard on a presentation last week and offered up recommendations from two sides. And I think even though a lot of them have been covered, and what we've discussed, depending on which side of the mill rate we were on, the one that we didn't really discuss that probably deserves some conversation is their proposal to give each employee a $1,000 bonus. So as we work through the parking lot items, I would at least like to have some discussion on that item or other items that Budget Review proposed to us. So they know that, you know, what they shared was heard, and we have the ability to respond to it. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question with regard to the Budget Review Committee's recommendation that we provide $1,000 per employee. Does that exclude police and fire since police and fire first responders received a bonus from the state, I believe in the amount of $1,000? Are they just focusing their recommendation on general and nonrepresented employees or are they, do they really mean all employees?
Mayor, can I ask the Chair to respond to that?
Sure. All right. I do have a couple of other questions. Mr. Mason, our fund balance this year in FY '22, we're somewhere around 71, 73 million, is that correct?
Close, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I can't remember. It's either 71 or 73 million. Now, with the proposed budgets that we have, at least for the last two meetings, at two and a half months, the fund balance would go to 48 million, I believe, at the 5.5 rate and about 40 million with the 5.3 rate. Is that, is that close?
Close.
And that's a difference of about $8 million right there. You know, one of the things that even at the rollback rate, we're getting, what, about an additional, almost $7 million in revenue compared to this year?
Correct.
Correct. So we have additional $7 million that we're getting this year compared to last year, even at the rollback rate, and we're closer to the $11 million at the 5.5 rate, I believe, in revenue. When you're talking about the millage rate, that is only one revenue source in the city. So when you talk about the 5.5, the 5.3, and what we got this year, the difference is at 5.5 with the almost 24% increase in assessed property values will be about $11 million more in revenue at 5.5. At 5.3 will be about $4,860,000, I believe, in additional revenue compared to this year's revenues with the avalerum tax. So we're still getting $4 million than we did last year. And we've taken our fund balance from either 71 or 73 million down to either 48 or 40 million. So we're getting four to 11 million more, and we've taken our fund balance down considerably and put that fund balance in other areas within the budget. But I thought it was worth noting where our fund balance is today compared to where it's going to be, you know, once we adopt whichever one of these budgets. Now, the only difference between the 5.5 and the 5.3 is $4,860,000, I believe. That's the only difference. So that's what's on the table. And when you take a look at the $4 million, you know, the, the golden question is, how can we possibly go back to the rollback rate and make sure we do the same thing that was proposed in the 5.5? To me, that's the elephant in the room. Because if we can find $4 million, we can stick with the 5.5 and do everything that's on that list, no matter if it's in the general fund or where it's at.
Wait, did you miss Stephen?
The only difference...
No, what you just said was the five, we can do the 5.3 if we find the 4 million and hedge everything. But you said 5.5.
If you look at the 5.5, what is proposed to do, and if you look at the preliminary, which I personally like the preliminary budget better than the proposed, but that's a different discussion. But if you look at the, either the preliminary or the proposed budget, the only two difference in those two at 5.5 and the 5.3 is a little over $4 million, and that's avalerum revenues. That's, that's the difference. So in order for all of us to get to where we want to be, because we have half of us that want to go to the rollback rate, and then you have the other half that wants to stay at the 5.5 because of the items that are listed, either in the parking lot items or, or the, the police software that they went for a little over $6 million, the crime center software, I'm sorry, $600,000, not $6 million. You know, so I think that's what we're kind of focused on. I think a good approach may be to take a look at where we could possibly come up with the $4 million. And I, and I think, I'm going to give you two examples. You know, I know I mentioned earlier the sale of property coming up, and I understand the city's managers' position and the finance directors', hey, that's a maybe, you know, like Councilmember Tate said. I've been to the settlement table thinking I was getting a check and something happened, and I didn't even get the check. So, you know, you can't count your eggs until they're hatched. So I understand that. So let's take a look at what we do have. We already know that we have a little over $10 million, 10.8, I believe it is, sitting there, that we were paid back from FEMA. That came out of fund balance. For those of you that may not have been here in '17 when the hurricane, how we paid for that, we paid for it out of fund balance and then got reimbursed from FEMA. And I think we still have another $2 million that's owed to us, but that's another discussion. But we know we got a little over $10 million just sitting there. That's in the account. If we look at our checking account, it's sitting there. The other thing is we got about $3.5 million in property sales that we've already went to settlement. We've already got the check. We've already deposited, it's sitting there. So that in itself is a little over $13 million. And now let's take a look at the PD and E study that we already know that we can't do till 2024. So to me, a win for all of us is to figure out where we can take that $4 million from. All eight of us get what we want. You can either take it out of the $13 million just sitting there. The reason that we had it sitting there is because we knew we were going to have overrides with the parks. Well, the city manager already made the recommendation, and I believe we've already voted on it. We've already taken that money off the table and from the yacht club to pay for those overages. And we had the $13 million still sitting there, not to include the PD and E study. There's no doubt in my mind, this, this finance director just said he thinks that we'll probably have at least $5 million in actuals at the end of the year. Then we could add the PD and E study back in that we're not even going to have to do to 2024 anyway. So that's another, you could just take the PD, PD and E study off the table, we're already there. We don't even have to touch the 13 and a half million. And then it's a win for every one of us. So we can sit here and bicker, we can, you know, bring our sleeping bags in September, but we're fighting over $4 million that's there, and I think we all can get exactly what we want. We don't push and button so quickly. But I think it's there. I think we, each one of us can get what we want. All we have to do is identify the $4 million and direct the city manager to take it from there. He can propose a budget exactly like the 5.5 scenario, but at the 5.3, I think we're all happy then. To me, that's a compromise. I think we can get there, we just got to direct the city manager where to, instead of looking at the money in the budget that he proposed, there's money sitting there that we haven't even talked about. Why, why wouldn't we use that money that is just sitting there? Take the PD and E study. Hey, I'm 100% on board with the PD and E study, and I want to get it done. And Councilmember Hayden brought that up first at our C-TAC meeting, the PD and E study to move that up. I'm 100% on board with that. But that doesn't mean it has to be locked in stone today because there will be money between now and 2024 that'll be there. We may even have those discussions in November. As far as the parking lot items, I think for me, to get a good understanding of what the monies are at the end-of-the-year actuals, all of those parking lot items should be discussed. The first, hopefully, we'll have that information because the budget ends in September. I know the nine-month was, end of June, Mr. Mason, is that when the, the nine-month actuals report, that goes to the end of June?
Correct.
You know, so we just got that, so it's about a month and a half. So if we say end of September, I'm, you know, I'm hoping by the first of November, we can have that, that discussion, maybe even by the end of October. Today's age with computers, I'm hoping we could get that, that information turned around fairly quickly. But if you look at everything on the parking lot items, we can do all of that in the proposed budget. We just got to direct the city manager where to get the 4 million, and I just mentioned just a few that is low-hanging fruit that's staring us right in the face. All we have to do is direct them to do that. We all get exactly what we want. So that's where I'm at. Before I go to the, I see the city attorney, I think her light came on first, the city manager, so I'll let you to...
I think the city attorney in this case is Mr. Mason.
Yeah, you might have got a pay raise.
The boss wants to go first.
So, Mr. Mayor, so I was following you up until a certain point. So let me just clarify one thing, that the P, the $4.5 million PD and E study...
It's a one-time expense.
It's one-time. It's not included in the operating budget where we have to come up with the $4 million, okay? So totally separate. However, I, the mayor's absolutely correct. You do have this extra money sitting in a restricted account that only you can touch, that you could use for the PD and E. So just like he said, take it off the table for this discussion, and at a later date, you can fund it with that money. I, I, I would still, will caution you on using any of those restricted reserves for recurring expenses. So parking lot items, again, you have flexibility, I think, because of the fact that you do have this, this extra money, especially if we're going to hold true and not allocate the $10.9, $10.9 million to the yacht club. But in terms of the operating budget, the O and M budget, the $4 million, a little less than 4.1 million, that has to come out of recurring expenditures, preferably.
Preferably or...
The only deficiency is in the, is in the avalerum tax, which is $4 million. So I understand that we're going to use that $4 million maybe to, to pay some reoccurring expenses to balance out that budget at 5.5. But we, you can still utilize that money.
You, you could, you could. Again, it's not something that we professionally support. However, would, you know, would we go to jail? Would we lose a birthday or anything like that? Absolutely not, okay? But it is not the preferred method of funding recurring expenses. But you can do it. I'm not going to tell you you can't do it.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I just want to say that, excuse me. I just want to say, I'm, I'm treating the city's checkbook like I treat my own, and I'm conservative and I run a very lean ship. And I just want to comment on some things that my fellow councilmembers have said. They said they don't want to stop the city from moving forward. I don't want to stop the city from moving forward at all. All our parking lot items, I feel confident that we're going to do them all. I had a councilmember talk about the, the ULI study and, and their comments on what we should do. And guess what? I've acted on it because they said that we need to build relationships with businesses and, and our nonprofits in the city. But I don't think that all of us are doing that very well. And I'll give you an example. We have a nonprofit in the city, organization, that is doing medians right now, 400 footers for under $30,000, and they're getting them done for under $30,000. You're going to be voting very shortly on doing, it's either a four or five median, it's approximately the same size, for $545,000. So see, we need to take the advice from the ULI study and we need to implement it because getting everything done and moving forward isn't just about raising taxes. There are other tools. We need to start implementing other tools. So I plan on implementing all them tools, and I also plan on working on getting all our parking lot items accomplished. And I, you know, that's all I want to say. I mean, I don't want to repeat what, what the mayor has said or other councilmembers have said, but I'm confident that we're going to get everything done. I just believe there's more ways than just raising taxes. And the other thing I haven't heard mentioned once is the citizens. People are being hit with a lot of increases right now, and I believe we have to bend and show them that we want to be lean with their dollars, and we also want to accomplish moving the city forward. And that's all I'm going to say tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree. I don't want to raise taxes either. I don't think anyone up here wants to raise taxes because the rate that we're all supporting lowers taxes. All eight of us are supporting lowering the taxes this year.
ways than just raising taxes. And the other thing I haven't heard mentioned once is the citizens. People are being hit with a lot of increases right now. And I believe we have to bend and show them that we want to be lean with their dollars, and we also want to accomplish moving the city forward. And that's all I'm going to say tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosd.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree. I don't want to raise taxes either. I don't think anyone up here wants to raise taxes, because the rate that we're all supporting lowers taxes. All eight of us are supporting lowering the taxes this year. So I just want to make that clear. Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate where you were going with what you were saying about finding a place where we could all be happy, right? But I don't think I'm going to be happy unless that $4 million is not from a one-time source. It needs to be recurring. So something needs to change if you want me to move. But I wouldn't be okay finding the money somewhere. And yes, I do think we'll have plenty of money for these one-time, for the parking lot items. But I can't see using that to balance a budget. I don't think that's responsible. Thank you.
Just a quick question, Mr. Mason. Fund balance. Have we utilized fund balance ever for reoccurring costs? Fund balance.
Not while I've been here. If it's ever been used previously, I would expect that it probably was used after, between 2010 and 2014. But I'd have to check with some others. It's, you know, we have a policy, a financial policy. It's the city council's financial policy, not to use one-time revenue sources for recurring expenditures. I mean, that's the city council's policy. You can do whatever, you know, whatever you want after that, but that's your policy.
Right. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't think we can ever get to the same place that you're suggesting, because you're looking at it in the window of one year. I'm looking at it in a three or four or five year and what may be ahead of us. And when you're looking at a $7 million deficit, 7.9 million deficit over the course of the next five years, as opposed to $11 million gain if we stayed at the proposed rate, that's a concern of mine. The city's going to continue to grow. Our employee base is going to continue to grow. If you look at the police officer strategic plan, and even though it's updated every year, it continues to ask for more officers to fund one of the most important things that's on our strategic plan, which is public safety. You're going to see the same thing moving forward as we go beyond Fire Station 13, which should be built by the end of next year. You know, future expenses that could include whichever way the Chiquita lot goes, whatever environmental planning and resiliency planning we may need to do moving forward. You know, whether you're talking reoccurring or non-reoccurring expenses, these are all part of our future. So to me, it, you know, there is no compromise looking at the budget in a one-year timeframe. It has to continue long after that. So if at some point we can have a discussion about our future, I'm all in. But, you know, if we're going to look at it with blinders on and not see the significance in investing in our community now, then, and I think that's where we're at. That's where the differences lie. You know, four of us have a plan for our future. The other four, I think, are still trying to decide that. And, you know, as we move forward, and I still don't want to lose track of the Budget Review Committee, even on that, or even today, if they want to weigh in on anything else that we've discussed.
I was going to give them opportunity at the end.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Let me ask you a question, Mr. Mason, real quick. The actuals at the end of the year that we typically roll over into fund balance, and then we make a determination later at some point what we're going to do with that.
I'm sorry, what?
At the end of the year actuals, when there's a dollar amount, like I know last year was about 35 million, we rolled it into...
25 billion.
25 million. We rolled that into fund balance.
Yes, everything just falls to a net fund balance, yes.
Okay. So we've rolled that in. Now, would it be fair to say that some of those dollars that, out of that $25 million were reoccurring costs, or dollars that was applied to reoccurring, whether it's positions that we didn't fill, that, you know, because I know one of the big savings we're going to have this year is the positions that we didn't fill, that we're going to have dollars left over. That was reoccurring cost. And at the end of the year, we throw it into fund balance. But as soon as you throw it into fund balance, everybody always says that's a one-time expenditure.
It is.
But unfortunately, the way that we have funded that is because of items that came out of year-over-year expenditures that we had a savings in.
So I'll give you an example, see if we can, we can do this. Okay, let's just assume that, you know, of that one position reflected $100,000, and it was a vacant position, and we didn't fill it, and it fell to the, it fell to fund balance. But we're going to fill it the next year. But we've reduced revenue in order to, but we're going to fill that position. It's still funded. And because we reduced revenue, this number still is out there, and we still need to fund it every single year. And, you know, you're not going to fund that with this one-time resource that it wasn't paid for in one year. You need to have the revenue to be able to fill that position each and every successive year thereafter. So that's, I mean, that's the, that's one of the reasons why the concept of the net, whether you have a net revenue or you have a net expense, you know, it's, it falls down to the fund balance, and, you know, you just simply don't use it to, for recurring expenses thereafter.
Right. Thank you. And I think one thing we should probably do while we're going down the line here, because it looks like all the lights are lit up around here. For me, parking lot items, for me, I think we have to decide where our millage rate's going to be before we can have that discussion.
What did you say, I'm sorry?
I said, I think before we even have any discussions on parking lot items, we have to, and that's why, one of the other reasons I said we should wait till later on to have that discussion, because we can sit here and have a two-hour conversation. We don't know where that millage rate's going to take us. So why have that discussion until we have that defined? So for me, I don't even think we should be talking about parking lot items today. But I just wanted to throw that out there. Maybe Councilmember Cosd, and Hayden, and Shepard, you can weigh in on that particular topic, and then I'll move on with my lights that are all down this way.
I agree with you. I think now is not the time to be talking about these, the millage is what we need to hammer out.
Right. Okay. Councilmember Hayden, was your light on from before?
Before. Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so I agree. I think especially the four of us that want to go to this rollback rate, I think it's important then, especially for the four of us, to identify, you know, the $4 million, and maybe even address the $7 million deficit that Councilmember Hayden just mentioned. And maybe if the four of us could come back to, you know, where we could find this, this four, I mean, I think it's a no-brainer with, with the PDE money not happening till 2024. To me, that's, you know, that's $4.5 million of it. And then there are items, like you mentioned, on this parking lot, which we don't have to go through today, that I think we could, you know, we could even, we can even hold. We can pause on those until we see how we are mid-year or quarter-year. I mean, I really feel like this is a time when we have to look at our trends, look at our fund balances in the last few years, last year, look at our trending, and take that strategic risk, knowing that we're going to be okay. And I know, Councilmember Tate, you're probably giving me daggers, but maybe, I'm kidding, but maybe, you know, that's something, I know that you say you're concerned that you don't want, you don't want us to stop growing and stop moving. But I think that, I believe that based on our trending and based on our budgeting and how well we've stayed within budget the last few years, that we'll be able to continue moving forward. And I don't think that even if we just paused on some of these parking lot items, we would, I think, I would hope, be able to reassure the other four of you that, you know, we will have the money. So I don't know. I mean, I'm still, I know, I'm still on the rollback rate. I still support it. I still want to get there. And maybe that's something that the four of us that want it need to really dig deep and come up with some creative solutions and take that strategic risk. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tate.
So none of us have really talked about this, but the Budget Review Committee did bring it up, and we, somebody mentioned it up here, about the $1,000 per employee. So let's just say we all eight said, by the way, we want to give $1,000 to every employee. What does that equate to? Where does the money come from? And obviously, it's a one-time expense.
One-time expense, enterprise-wide, it's about $1,008, and it'll...
Yes, it's, it's $1,008 times the .065, whatever the pension costs are. So it's a, it's a bigger number.
It's a much bigger number, right? Okay, so...
Yes, I didn't factor in the fringe, the fringe benefits associated.
Okay, well, no one really shared up here whether or not we would support that. But I wanted to keep that in mind, since Budget Review brought it up, and Mr. Jones brought it up, and several people did. So remember that.
So can I answer the question you asked?
Please, yes.
So again, since that is a one-time expense, because we were not going to build that into their base salary, that could come out of a reserve for that respective fund.
$13 million that we were talking about.
So utility fund will provide it from their folks, for their folks, and so on and so forth.
Okay, so in that respect, if this council has any agreement on that, I would support that, because I think that our employees deserve it. Also, I think it's better than getting a tax reduction of three, whatever it's going to be in their tax bill. They would much rather have the money. But my position really hasn't changed. I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. We have been fighting over $4 million since the beginning of time. And if it were so simple, we would just say, no, PNED study, and we have $4 million, and we're back to where we are. But it isn't working that way, according to, from what I hear. So if it were that simple, and Mr. Mason, I guess I'm going to ask you that, is it that simple, that we say we're not doing the PD and E study, we've got $4 million, put it in, and we go to the rollback, and we can get everything done that we want to do?
Okay, so the difference between the rollback rate and the rates that we're talking about is the program modifications. Program modifications.
Can you put your mic on or something? I can...
I could have yelled, but...
There you go. Thank you.
Probably better to do this. The program modifications are recurring expenses.
Right.
Okay, I mean, the intent is, is that they would be recurring year over year over year. And so from this standpoint, we wouldn't recommend putting the $4 million that was originally identified as a one-time expenditure for the PD and E study against recurring costs, because you'll have to pick up those costs at some point in time with some revenue source in the future.
Okay. Well, just for this discussion, and I don't know if everybody wants to weigh in, I would support the one-time employee benefit coming out of the reserves for one time. And I would stay with where I'm at for the moment. And I guess, the way Councilmember Nelson put it, the four of you are going to have a committee and decide how you're going to, well, not a committee, but some, so what you want to do, because we did this in 2009, when the market tanked and we were in a hole, we went down every line and said, oh, we can get rid of this toothpick, and we can get rid of that toothpick. I don't want to do that. Thank you. And I don't want to spend my time doing that. If the people that we've hired can come back and say, here's your $4 million, and you can go to the rollback and do everything you want to do, I'm there. But until that, I'm not. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was basically to say the same thing. If it was as easy as funding recurring expenses with one-time money, then everyone would have everything they want. But it's not. Because what's going to happen next year is we're going to have to take $4.5 million from reserves to match what we gave out of one-time expenses this year. And is it going to be there? Is the, is the market going to support a 10% increase? Is it conservative to say four? I think four is a conservative number, because we saw such an explosion this year. Doesn't mean that it's going to fall back half next year. It could freeze at any moment. And then what's going to happen? We've taken the millage rate so low that next year, the rollback rate might be 5.7. Is everyone supporting the rollback rate right now, going to vote for 5.7 next year, if that's what the rollback rate is? Are you? No one's answering. So I'm assuming that some of them might not be there. You'll have to look at it. So to say, go into the rollback rate now, are we going to want to do that? We're funding, people are saving money on their taxes, they're getting money back. We're not using one-time expenses for, for all of it. And even if we pull the $4.5 million out and use it, now we're cutting everything that's removed on this, on this list. So I want to see some of these things happen. I want to see the crime center happen this year. And if we don't get it into this budget, even if we apply for it in November, now we're already setting the police department another six months back, and I don't want to do that. I want him to know in September that they've got this money, and they can already start ordering stuff. I want to get the financial budget software so that we can do all this. All these things are things the city needs. So I don't want to say the money's going to be there next year. The money's here now. So we need to utilize it the best we can. As far as the $1,000 bonus to the, all the employees, I think bonuses are merit of the employees. So that one, I would like to wait until we see the end of the year actuals. If the city came in under budget, everything was done, we've got that money, that $5 million they're projecting, that's when I want to vote on giving a $1,000 bonus to the city. If they come in and they spent more, or something is wrong, why are we giving bonuses when they didn't stay within budget? So I'd prefer to make that decision after the budget's finalized. And that would actually be closer to holiday times anyway. So I'm all for giving them a bonus, but I would rather be at the end. And I'm still where I'm at with the 5.5, unless somehow staff can come back with, which I don't think they can, because they've already trimmed the budget. We already gave them what they needed. So for them to find $4 million somewhere else, unless they can do that in a week, I'm not going to move off the 5.5. So, and I don't think that's possible. As far as waiting on the one-time expenditures, if we're not funding recurring expenditures with one-time uses, I think we need to fix and finish this today, not push it along further. So I would like, like I asked everyone before, if we were to finish this today, were the suggestions that I put out there, which they're obviously prepared for on the screen, something you guys would consider?
I think, I think first, we need to find out if we want to entertain that, and we do that collectively. So I thought I heard Councilmember Cosd, Hayden, Shepard, and myself say we would rather wait. Councilmember Tate?
Oh, wait.
I want to do it.
Wait. Oh, wait.
All right. So that takes care of that.
Until we get the millage rate.
Exactly. Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, once we get that worked out, and then we can look at these other things. Mr., are you, I'm sorry, are you done, Mr. Councilmember? Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make two points. Number one, hopefully, to simplify things, for the September public hearings, I don't think we need to have finality on the parking lot items list. We can always submit a budget that just shows that $16.9 million is in reserves, okay? And I can, you can have a budget to vote on in September that doesn't take that into account. And just like you've been talking here, you can revisit that after the start of the fiscal year, okay? But for September, we've got to put a document together for the public hearings that you need in September, all right? And I don't think that the one-time expenditures should hold up that process, okay? I want to also make another point, actually, two more to go. In terms of if we use one-time funding for recurring expenditures, I think both Mr. Mason and I are obligated to notify our bond rating agencies that we're doing that. So there might be an impact to our overall credit rating, okay? And then the last point, just very round numbers, quick, you know, back of the envelope, if we awarded $1,000 per employee, this also counts contract employees that I know will be excluded, but for the purpose of calculation, we included them, plus fringe benefits, FICA, and, you know, and so on and so forth, the overall impact is just shy of $2.5 million. Enterprise-wide, not to the general fund itself, it comes in at about, eh, about 1.6 million.
All right. Well, I was hoping that we'd have a little more clarity today. I don't think we're any different now than we were a month ago, quite honest with you. I will tell you, you know, I think most of us are going to put our flag in the stand. I'm planning on bringing a sleeping bag. I'm planning on bringing a sleeping bag, a cooler, and my position won't change. So if that means we're here for days, I'm up for the challenge. So that's where I'm at. Councilmember Cosden?
That sounds like fun. I just wanted to see if we could give the budget review.
Yeah, once we're all done, I was going to do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Madam Chair or any, or any board members? The floor is yours.
I was going to speak to, yeah, okay. I'll just go first, but it looks like several other folks want to speak. I'm not going to, I'm speaking, I'm reminding you of things that were in our presentation or that were said, with the exception of this first comment. So we met over the last two or three weeks and two things were repeated. And the first one was from Mr. Starner, who reminds us, we're taxpayers. You've asked us to do something and we're doing it as taxpayers. And the second thing that was repeated to us is you can't use one-time expenditures to pay recurring bills. And I've heard a little bit of that today. And Mr. Mason stopped me and the committee, not me personally, from using that, from using one-time money on a variety of things that we were interested in. So I would just say the, I'm glad to hear that it's a $2.5 million bonus cost and I think you're going to free up 4.5 million that I, we didn't know could be freed up. And I'm hoping that that's a legitimate funding for employee bonuses. So from our presentation, I want to remind you that while it wasn't 100% consensus, those people that support the proposed budget rate originally supported the half-back rate. And we supported the half-back rate that would have given you $8 million more dollars. And that $8 million more dollars was an investment in this city's future. We have a growing community, we need to make investments in this city's future. You've done strategic reports, you've done strategic planning, you've done a ULI report. Please remember that the city relies on you all to use those, the results of those reports to the best of your abilities. And the only other thing I think I want to say from our original presentation is that there was a, there is a discussion on how long it takes to get reimbursements. So I think we're still getting some nickels and dimes from Irma and as you said, that was a number of years ago. And when we talked about the reserve, one of the conversational flows was about having money when we need it. And that was why we were supportive of retaining the reserves at the level they were with the option to grow it as it's viable. So that's, that's all I'm going to say.
I'm confused. Mr. Mason?
Yeah.
A little bit ago, you indicated we had, I think, $71 or $72 million in reserves. Is all of that allocated for something?
Yes.
Okay. And you made the point several times that we don't spend reserves on recurring expenses.
I've made the point that we have a policy not to utilize reserves for recurring expenditures, yes.
Okay, on page seven of your presentation, the third line down, well, line one is millage, line two is other use of reserves is $16.9 million. And that brings total revenues and total expenditures to $247 million. What's different about those reserves than the 71 million we just talked about?
Those reserves are covering not recurring expenditures, but things that are done on a one-time basis. So those reserves that we are utilizing, that's coming out of the $70 million that we're talking about, would be utilized for quote-unquote "one-time expenditures", such as the purchase of the software, such as, you know, the facility maintenance, such as skate park building. This is a one-time expense, it's not like it's going to be recurring every single year.
Okay. If we were to use the $4 or $5 million from reserves, you say you have to report that to the rating agencies because that could have a negative impact on our credit rating. What, $4 or $5 million is what percentage of our overall borrowing?
In this particular case, it's not, I don't know what the 4.5 million of our overall borrowing is. I mean, we've got, I think, $170 million outstanding on general, or general debt, not including utility debt. But the issue isn't so much a percentage of debt, it's an issue of we're utilizing fund balance for a non-recurring expense and we would advise them that we've taken that step. That's it. You know, and they would make a determination of what that means. They would ask, I'm sure, do you plan on doing this every year? And at the same time, I would have to say, I don't know. And I don't know. But in this particular circumstance, when we tell them that we have, you know, $70 million in reserves and we're going to use $17 million and spend it down for one-time expenses, they're going to generally be okay with that as long as they understand what our, in our case, we've come up with a budget stabilization reserve, what does that mean? And that's what we would tell them.
Okay, I just, I'm just wondering if that, that $4 or $5 million would be a significant impact? I mean, if you can show them a track record of having not done it and...
Well, and, you know, the mayor asked the question. I mean, I do know we were spending it down in the, after 2010 for a little while. There's no doubt in my mind of that, they were. So, and it's taken a while to get it back.
All right, thank you, I'm less confused.
Okay, thank you. I really, I'm going to speak as a board member and a taxpayer, but I guess, you know, like Chair Gruber said, you know, we are all taxpayers and I think that's why we're advisory to you because we can get a little closer to the information that most, you know, taxpayers wouldn't read, even though it's available to them. But as a board member, I did consider all, you know, the value for the dollars that we were looking at. I was in the majority that did support the half-back rate because it is a reduction from the current rate that we have at 6.25. However, that graph that they showed, the colored graph, I like the color green. I want us to be a better community. And I felt that the tax dollars that we were saving even on that was good value for my money and everybody else that lives here. But as a taxpayer, I appreciate your consideration of my tax dollars. But I am willing to pay less in taxes, just not the least. Even for me, $100 a year, you know, savings or paying more even would be worth it for some of the projects that we have. In my experience, I've actually been in a community that would use one-time revenues to fix the budget. That was, you know, so we did sell property, we did get a grant for something, we did get whatever. Now, my community didn't have as many zeros as this one does, but you know, the premise is the same. You know, that we plugged the holes and we moved along. But we didn't plan enough for the future. And there's a lot of people coming here. This, this community, I actually looked back on our properties' tax dollars, you know, what we spent in the 80s or something. We were spending, you know, a lot more, triple, almost quadruple what we are now. But we didn't get as much even then. But now I think we all need more. You know, we have people coming here, we need infrastructure improvements, we need public safety. The intersections for me, the safety was really one of my bucket list items. I like the improvement in the parks. We have, the median age for this community has dropped considerably in the last 20 years. Those people want to go to parks and have good recreation, affordable for everyone. I know we're always trying to give back the $3.50 a month or whatever it ended up being, but wouldn't someone rather take their family and enjoy it in one of our wonderful parks with all the amenities that we can provide to them? I think that's a great value for, you know, the cup of coffee at Starbucks. But I hope that, I understand where each of you are. But I really hope that you'll consider that as a taxpayer, I'm okay with paying a little more as long as you're prudent with my tax dollars and you give me good value. Thank you.
I just have a question about the origin of this $16 million. That originally was money left over from fiscal 2021, is that correct?
Mr. Mason's out of room, but as I understand it, it's a combination of monies left over, monies that we over-collected in revenues, we underspent, and it's money above and beyond what we identify for our reserves.
So we could have spent it for ongoing expenses in fiscal 2021. But now that it's been putting in a reserve bucket, we cannot, is that correct?
That is correct. Move it, you may have saved it because you didn't spend it that year, okay? But, so now because you didn't spend it, falls in this bucket and technically you're not supposed to use it to fund the recurring expenditures. Because the following year, that money is still in, for that expenditure, is still in the next year's budget. Follow what I'm saying?
Not quite. I'm sorry to say. It was spendable in 2021.
It was spendable because it was a recurring expense, but you didn't spend it. So then it dropped into the unspent bucket, okay? Now, but you still have that expense budgeted in the following year. So you still need to have that revenue in the following year, okay? Unless you cut it. But you still, because you didn't spend it the previous year, you have it in that bucket to be spent again, but for a one-time purpose.
Thank you.
I don't think I explained that properly.
I think you did, no. I think that's the first time it was explained really clearly. And that's the point that I think everyone who supports the rollback rate is saying is that because of these record-breaking two years that we just had, we had an overrun of $16.9 million. And because that wasn't spent, it went into one-time expenditures. And we're of the mind, those of us that support the rollback, saying, why can't you take $4 million of that and even it out to support the rollback rate? And we're over-complicating this rule, well, now it's only for one-time expenditures. Well, before, just last year, it was in a budget, we didn't use it. So I don't think it's as big of a deal as we're making it to take $4 million from this list and put it back in to even it out for the rollback rate. And to add on to what one of my colleagues said, I personally do mind paying a little more in taxes when the to-do list that exists has not been fully completed. And that's all I'm going to say about that, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond quickly? With all due respect, I need to remind you that one of the reasons we had excess fund balance the last two years is because of the COVID pandemic. We underspent the last two years for a variety of reasons. We didn't provide the level of service that we were budgeted to provide because COVID impacted our operations. At the same time, we were very fortunate that unlike other communities throughout the United States, COVID did not affect our revenues. It actually improved our revenue outlook. So these last two years, in my opinion, are really an anomaly because of COVID. It's not because of anything else. I think Mr. Mason has testified before you on numerous occasions that something normal for us is somewhere around the $5 million range. So I just want to make sure that we get that. And in terms of over-complicating this, this is where the, I mean, no disrespect.
I did not mean to be rude with that statement, by the way.
No, no, and I don't mean to be rude in my response back to you. But public budgeting is complicated. It's not like a household budget, it's not like private sector accounting. It is very different, at times very difficult. That's why you have professionals like Mr. Mason and that's why you, we have to have highly-paid financial advisors and attorneys on board to help us navigate through the complicated process of budgeting and fund accounting and bonds and bond ratings, all of that stuff. I wish it was simpler, but it isn't.
One thing I would like to mention of, Mr. City Manager, you know, we've had $75 million over the last three years, 19, 20, and 21. The first year we had substantial savings was pre-COVID. Mr. Shadr?
Okay, thank you. First of all, I think we could save money if we raised the thermostat in here. I'm freezing in here, so, okay. First thing, just to kind of, you know, I've heard a lot of reserve numbers talked about. The reserve today is on page 55, I think, of Mr. Mason's presentation on August 9th, and that's $94.3 million. That's our general reserve today. Now, if you use 17 million of one-time usage, then it's going to drop to 77 million. But right now, today, if I'm reading this chart right, there's 94 million in our general reserve. And there's all kinds of restrictions for all that, but it's still all reserve money. And this council can do as you wish with all that. You can change your policy on that. But there's 94 million, unless I'm wrong. If you want to comment on that, I'm fine.
Mr. Mason? It's 94 million less $18.9, $8 million that you put into fiscal year 2022. So you'll note that it starts at fiscal year 2022, $94 million less the $18 million, plus the $25 million, that gets you to getting into the fiscal year 2023. So I just want to point that out. So the chart is there. It starts out with where we started, the beginning of the year. We added $25 million. Then we take our budget, we subtract out the $18 million. That kind of gets you to where, you know, and to where we started out. And then we have some things that are non-spendable. There's a whole lot of items, a list of items that are in that chart that were in the August 9th budget.
Yeah, when I'm using the 94.3, it's below the $18 million that you were talking about, I think. So if you want to look at page 55. My other thing, you know, I think we do need to look at the actuals. It's seeming to cause an issue. When I look at the actuals, just an expense between second and third quarter, we spent $53 million. We would have to spend $77 million in the fourth quarter to balance, to spend all the money. And that's, so that's 27 million more than the previous quarter that we spent. So I, you know, I mean, maybe there's a lot of one-time hits in the fourth quarter. I don't have privy to that information. And my other kind of detail here is just looking at the parks. They did up the maintenance on parks by 3.4 million in the budget. And then there was one-time expenses to add $2.5 million. Now it's down to $400,000. I'm just curious about why that was increased. And just so you know, $5 million of the $60 million in the GO bonds was used to improve the existing parks. So to me, we've spent a lot of money on existing parks. I'm just, haven't got any details to understand what all that extra money is going to do this year for our parks, whether it's maintenance, improvements, or so forth. And I do want to kind of foot-stomp what's already been said many times. Seems like we treat recurring costs and one-time use as black and white. Or, you know, and it's not. It is, as said, it's leftover recurring money is in one-time money. So because we have a policy or decision that says that, I'm not sure that's really accurate because it's all the same kind of money. My last thing, hopefully someone's not going to say we're going to hurt our debt. We are, we have reduced our debt by $80 million in the last 10 years. So I don't, and our revenue and costs, or our revenue is greatly where we could even have more debt. So I don't see how saying we're using some money would really hurt our credit rating. It should be fantastic with the ratios of debt we have in this city. Okay, that's it.
Mr. City Manager? I see your lights on, you have any?
Come back to me later, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mason? Mr. Mason, AKA City Attorney, I see your lights on.
I think I actually answered the comment, the question. So, you know, that, I've already given you an analysis on the quarterly budget review and what I expect and what I think is going to end up happening. Do I know what's going to happen? No. Do I think that, you know, there's a possibility of spending all 70 million dollars? You better believe it. We're at 70 million dollars, we're at 70% of expenditures today. And we've got the remainder of the year to go. We expect that we will expend at least 25% through the end of the year. So that would take you to about 95%. That's what I'm expecting. I don't know why, you know, I mean, it, you know, I see the expenditures all, all the time, so I kind of get an idea of what we have going on. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. Um, as far as the reserves, everyone's talking about this 90 million dollars. Some of them are committed already, correct? And some of them are withheld and they've already been assigned. So the 16 million is really the unassigned funds, right?
The 16.9 is above and beyond what we've targeted that we're going to keep in our unassigned savings account.
Correct.
So to get from 16 to 90, they're already assigned and committed and, and part of the actual two-and-a-half-month reserves that.
The two-and-a-half-month reserves are out of that. So the 16.9 is in excess of all of that.
Okay, so I wanted everyone to hear that too. It's not like there's 90 million dollars there and we're just keeping it there. There, a lot of them are already reserved and committed. So with them having the 16, um, I just want to clarify that. Also, apparently we were, we're tabling the parking lot items. Is there any way that you guys can fix that graph and email me what I'm proposing? So at least I can see it and look over it while I'm reviewing the budget sometime before next week. If it doesn't go in the presentation, just get me that slide with what I asked for. And I can email you guys what I asked for. I'd just like to get.
We can send that to all members of council, yes.
Okay, I just, I feel like we're stuck on two things and I think we could get some other things done. And, uh, I obviously we're running out of time today. We'll be back next week. I really hope that the, the four council members can look through the budget and find something that, um, will make the other four of us change our minds. So that's all.
So I have, I have a question. So is council committed to coming back next week? And if we are, what's going to be the purpose of the meeting? Because if, if we're at a deadlock right now and we don't compromise, and right now I, I don't see that, what you will have to consider at your first public hearing in September will be the city manager's proposed budget at the 5.5568 millage rate. And then you'll have a formal public hearing like you're doing, well, this is a workshop, but a formal public hearing. And then you get to tear that budget apart or you get to support it. You get to do that at the first meeting in Sep, in September, at, at that public hearing. And then you get to do it again at the second public hearing in, at the end of September. And I would hope that you would take action on some form of a budget, whether it's the, what I submitted or something else. And then again, the city attorney is going to give you her opinion on what happens if you don't do that. But in terms of having a budget document for the September public hearing, and as I said before, you will have the big book, but it will be based on what I submitted as the 5.5568.
So when, yeah, when would we get that book then? Because if they're going to pick through and try to line item 4 million dollars.
So the big book, you'll have the big book at least a week before the, well, you have to have it a week before the public hearing.
Correct. So then my opinion is I don't think we need to come and argue again for another hour and a half next week. Wait for the big book and then hash it out the first week of September.
I would agree with that.
Well, I have a question about that. So if the four of you that are on the, the rollback rate want to find the 4 million, will you be able to do that next week on Tuesday or do we want to wait till September?
I mean, it would help to have the line item by line item because that's.
You kind of have that in your first book.
We have an overview.
Yeah, you have.
I mean, we have an overview. We have a, we have a high-level look, but we don't have what rolls up into those buckets.
I'm going to respectfully resist. Council getting into the weeds and going line item by line item. I don't think that that.
Well, you've kind of pushed us in that corner.
I, I don't think that's a valuable use of your time. Your, your, your time is to establish strategic direction. You, you, you give me a general direction and then let staff figure out how to get there. And I think that the alternative that, that we gave you is, again, you, you target programs on the macro level rather than deciding, all right, I'm going to cut 600 dollars from, you know, the, the, um, office paper budget. I'm going to buy 4,000 less pencils.
I see what you mean.
So back to my question then, we're still stuck on that 4 million. So does staff feel like, and I guess it's Mark, feel like you can find 4 million somewhere, leaving the parking lot items out and getting us to the rollback rate?
He, I, I need the answer from Mark.
Yes, she needs the answer from me.
Because I, I think the issue is, we can come up with proposals all day long. Just like we, you asked us to come up with 978,000. We did that. You're not agreeing with it. At the last meeting, I said, well, tell me what the parameters are. What are you willing, what, what's off limits, what's in play? And we didn't get direction. So unless we get that direction, I think we're, we're just shooting in the dark. And there's no guarantee that I can, I can bring you 10 more lists and you can disagree with all 10 lists. I'm, I'm hopeful, members of city council, that we could get to a compromise. I think that, um, all of you know that going into October 1st without a budget does not bode well for, for the city moving forward. And, and I'm hopeful that among the eight of you, there would be a willingness to budge somewhat, whether it's on the millage rate or whether it's on one, uh, recurring reductions. I'm confident that as leaders of this organization and leaders of the community, that you have it in you to get to that, that level of compromise. I don't think we are that far apart in a billion-dollar budget. We are 4 million dollars away from that. Again, if you want to give us general parameters of what you will accept, we can get there. And so I'm just going to throw this out just for the sake of conversation. If you tell us to go back, Mr. Mayor, and take another stab at it, and you tell me you can go ahead and cut parks, then I'll do that. If you come back and tell me you, you can't touch fire, you can't touch police, and you tell me what is off limits, I can bring you back, I can get a little closer, hopefully, to something that you will accept. That's, that's my job. That's, that's Mark's job. I don't want to put you in that position. I don't want you doing our jobs because then we're failing. But again, tell me what my, my rules are. And then I'll, I'll try to bring you back something. We took a stab at something thinking that we had alternative ways. And we war-gamed 50 different scenarios. And we looked at a variety of, uh, we took into account various considerations in terms of what's the impact to the public, what's the impact to the organization, what's the impact to the city council? Is it, you know, are there really long-term reductions that we can count on? So we did all of that over the course of the last four or five days. We spent hours and hours. And so what we thought we did to get to that 978,000 dollar golf is we thought we identified things that we could, we had alternatives to fund. And that's how we came up with that 978. If it's truly 4 million dollars, we will sequester ourselves again and go through that exercise. But for it to be effective, it's not going to be effective, again, me cutting, you know, 10,000 dollars out of the fire department's discretionary travel budget. It might be that I may have to do that, but I'll look at it enterprise-wide and not just on a department-level basis. I don't want to nickel and dime the organization. That's not a productive use of time. I want to focus on the strateg, the, the strategy of, of the reductions that we're proposing.
So if you were to ask me what you just said, give me clear direction as to what you can't touch. For me, it would be police and fire, obviously, parks and transportation. Transportation, including roads, infrastructure for roads and sidewalks. I don't know about anything else. But those would be my, um, you can't touch them, including the crime center. I don't know if everybody else wants, I mean, that's what he's asking. So I think.
Crime centers one time.
Okay, but I still want that in there. It's a one-time, whenever we decide to talk about it, so. But those would be my departments that I would not want to touch. And anything to do with enter gov, like whatever we have set aside for Plant Moran, for whatever their names are, Tyler, whoever, all that I want to have in there.
So let me, let me a, ask a question, Mr. Mayor, if I can, because I need this clarification. It's important. Are we looking at restoring the full 4 million dollar difference in program enhancements between the rollback and the proposed rate? Or are we still just looking for the 978 so you can fund the additional enhancements in the police department and achieve a rollback rate? I would say start from there because everything else are ex, are extras.
Extras.
And if I, and, and as I said last week, if I knew that I was starting back, starting from the rollback rate, I wouldn't have built in the extras.
So for me, the answer is no. I want to restore, uh, the Pops Cafe coordinator. I want to restore the golf course equipment. I want to restore the first-year fiber optics. These things are important.
They're one-time. Some of those are one-time.
If they can be identified as one-time, then let's look at that, that way.
Can you pull all the one-times out and just give us the recurring?
Well, that's what I was looking at with the 978. The only reoccurring on there is the compliance officer. Medians will be in the following year's budget. We're just taking it out for one year. And the 520 alleyway paving for this year, we're taking out because it sounds like we have a balance of 1.5 million.
So.
So how I look at that is.
500 dollars.
When you look at the museum and the cultural art, that's one time. When we get to our parking lot items, I'm going to fund that again.
No, I think that's recurring.
That's recurring and it was actually 45. It was actually 45. You all knocked it down to 40, but it was actually 45. So, because we had talked about 60, we were at 45, and then you brought it back down to 40. So I don't know where we are with that, but those are nickels and dimes.
But we could do some one-time assistance each year for those two organizations based on the monies that we have left over. That may be even greater than the reoccurring costs.
Getting, so we could take that out and look at. So if, would that give you what you just said, starting with the 978, can you work that way?
So let's just make sure we're clear on this. If we take the 978 and take these items that you've listed here, which some of those are reoccurring, and we say, okay, Mr. City Manager, we'll accept those. We'll be able to get to the rollback rate. But then council has the opportunity, when we see the end-of-year actuals and we take a look at, uh, these parking lot items, I think we're going to have a substantial amount of money. If we want to put 312 back into the median program, I think we'll be able to do that. If we want to give a one-time additional from the 40,000 back, what, what did we do, 60 or 65?
We said 60 in our June meeting at Pompano Pines, but we used to do 45.
Okay, so, you know, I think that we can do a one-time, uh, uh, revenue to those particular organizations based on the monies that we have left over. We can do the medians. The alleyway, I don't even think, you know, since we got 1.5 there now, um, there's enough to fund what, what the cost is. I think that's a given. And then we can, uh, we can move forward.
So, Mr. Mayor, for the purposes of balancing the budget to get you to that target expenditure level under the rollback, yes, you can do what you just described. That helps check that box. We can say we've balanced it. Now, we've cleared that hurdle. The next hurdle before council will be to decide whether you're going to go with the 5.568 or you're going to go with the rollback now that we've balanced it to something that you can live with at the rollback rate. Follow, I think it's a two-step process.
So if we do the 978, if we say, okay, with this, will that get us to the rollback rate?
If you do the 978 as we proposed here on slide six, that will help you balance the budget to get you to the rollback rate. Then you have to decide whether you want to go to the rollback rate. Because right now you're still 44.
But we're going to get everything we want in the rollback rate.
You will get.
All but that slide six.
All but that, yeah. Slide six.
Yeah, let me verify.
All but the compliance officer, the museum, the cultural, the medians, and the alleyway, right?
Hang on one second. Let me.
And we can do a budget amendment?
No, these could be one-time, like the mayor said, those could, we can work that out.
I just want to verify.
Okay, wait.
I've got something from one council member who wants to keep certain items that are in our program modifications in. I have a different comment over here saying, and, you know, we've provided some option to you to do the 978, which is what you tasked us with last week. And we've shown you that if you do that, you're balanced at the rollback rate and we're done. But all of these things that are over here on the right are still out.
Correct. The 978 buys you the additional police positions.
That's it. Nothing more, nothing less.
Because that's, those, those were the instructions that we had gotten last week.
So 978, I need to be clear on it. So the 978, if I were to go to the rollback rate, 978 gives me a balanced budget and it leaves out the four items that we're looking at here. And then come September, when we have so-called extra money, money that we haven't spent after the fiscal year. The fund balance, money we haven't spent is what that, I think that is. Then obviously we can fund these as one-times, even though the compliance officer is, uh, ongoing. The museum and the art is ongoing, the medians are ongoing. So I don't know how we fund them as one-time because they're actually ongoing.
Well, we only took them out for one year.
Correct.
Well, this will be taking them out, out of the operating and ma, the O and M general fund budget in perpetuity. Because these cuts aren't, the 4 million dollars is not one year. It's in perpetuity. Once that money is off the table, it's gone forever. It's not like you get it back the next year.
So you're telling me that I couldn't fund the, the museum and the art center forever unless I did it.
Unless you do it in increments, one at a time. When you review your end-of-year fund balance, you can make those through a budget amendment each year as opposed to building it in the budget year after year after year.
It can be a decision, an annual decision.
Yes, an annual decision to use one-time dollars for that purpose.
I'm good with that.
Well, you're good at it the way it is now. The four of us aren't, so of course you're good with it.
But next year with a different council, that could be a whole different. This all could be a mute point anyway because. Exactly.
Well, remember, you can't, you can't bind future, you can't bind future councils no matter what. Except for that.
So can I ask a question? Because it's really the items on page five that we're losing, right?
Correct.
What they said, 978 with, on page five has been replaced with 978 on page six.
That is correct. That is correct.
So I want you to understand that one of the things Mr. Walsh said was from the page five list. And I'm sorry, I was, I needed to get that straight in my brain.
And, and I do need to make it a very important point to members of council and the budget review committee. There was a change in legislation this year that essentially alters the way you consider funding for the police department. Meaning that if you put it into their budget this year and in future years you want to remove it, any reduction in the bu, in the police department's budget is subject to appeal. And this is what's new. This, the, the district, the state attorney for this circuit, this district, can appeal any reduction you make to your police department. In addition, any member of city council can file a formal appeal to any proposed reduction in the police department's budget once it's in there. Then that appeal goes to the governor's office. And then they hear it. So I, it's, it's important that you know that, because once you bake it into their budget, it's going to be very difficult. It's going to take gubernatorial action for you to take it out.
Yeah, that's that fund the police initiative.
Correct.
Councilmember Welsh, your lights on, did, were you finished with your comments?
Well, no, I was saying that I'm, I really still want to see us do the first year fiber optic install. You know, we could, even by going, I want to go back to the full 4 million and decide what we want to cut. Hearing that about the police officers, maybe we relook again about funding them all this year and put them into next year. Maybe we relook on, uh, you know, I'm okay removing community events, but I don't want to remove these employees that are needed. I don't want to remove, um, we just spent all this money at the golf course, getting the roots trimmed and everything, and now we're going to deny them new equipment. So they're riding around on new car passes with old equipment. You know, if we're, if we're putting money in to make things nice, and just to cut $3 a month, it, it, it doesn't make sense for me. So even if we find these monies that we're losing to get to the rollback, I'm probably not going to go there. Now, uh, last week, Councilwoman Tate, uh, asked if anyone would like to see, or anyone would move on their position to see a middle rate between these two. And at this point, for the sake of time, I said, if no one else was willing to, I wasn't going to. But if anyone from the, uh, from the four stuck on the rollback rate is willing to entertain maybe a three-point, so whatever the difference is, and we can get some of these items without cutting things, I would be willing to maybe considering meeting next week and at least seeing what that does. Uh, I don't feel like they're going to do that, so I'm probably wasting my breath, but I'm putting an olive branch out there, saying if it's, if it's, uh, if that's what it is, then that's what it is. And I'm, I'm done now, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Nelson.
To, Mr. City Manager, what position, did you say again in your office, that you were going to take out?
I currently have a vacant professional compliance officer position that I would eliminate. And, and the reason I offered that is, um, before I can expect any of our line departments to cut, my office has to lead by example. So, um, we decided that we were going to cut my office first, before I ask any department to make any cuts.
But would we need that position, given, don't we have the auditor and the audit, auditing department?
I, I, I think that with the addition of Mr. Granbough in, in our office, and Dean Frizzali in, um, human resources, we are handling any employee-related complaints that we are getting. We don't get a whole lot of them.
Oh, I see what you mean, so you would do it for HR purposes.
I, I think that's a luxury I can do without. And, and if it's, if it's a complaint that really, and I will tell you, we've had that certainly in the last year, that I think really needs to go, um, outside of human resources in my office, then we bring in a specialized investigator to do that.
Okay.
So I can do without that position. Now, I, I, let me just remind you that I was holding that position in the event that we moved forward with implementing our strategic plan and the ULI recommendations. Then I was going to reclassify that position into one of three potential, potential positions. But right now, it's a luxury. I can always come back to you at a later date, future budget year, and request that position at that given time. So for us moving forward, it's on there. I recommend, in, in order for you to get to the rollback rate from a balancing perspective, I recommend you take it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Cosd.
Thank you. Do we need to have the meeting next week? I think maybe we do. I mean, we're, we're not done here. I feel like our conversation isn't done, but we're all ready to go, so we're done. But I feel like there's still more conversation to be had about this. Does anyone else feel that way? I think we do need the meeting next week. I mean, I mean, if we're all like that stuck, then I guess it's useless. But it feels like we're coming to a place, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I could agree with the 978 cuts and get to that, and then look at a lot of these other things as, uh, the monies that we have on the table, you know. If we take the, uh, the monies that we're giving the two organizations down to 40, but we give them another 21, you know, we may not be able to do that every year.
Here's what I, I think we need to have that meeting, because I'm not comfortable with those cuts. And so, there we go.
Then let's have the meeting, but can we talk about the, the parking lot list, then? Can we go through that, line item by line item, and, and sacrifice, so we all come to consensus?
Yeah, I think we need to know the millage rate before we even have that discussion.
We said we weren't going to look at them until after the September.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay, okay. All right, well, I mean, I would rather try to hash it out in another meeting than bring my sleeping bag. Just saying. Thank you, Mayor.
And I'd rather hash it out next week.
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to have the meeting, but unless staff can bring something back, you know, this is staff's responsibility to, to try to come up with a median between the two of us, a compromise between the two of us, I think, so.
I think staff is willing to work.
You know, so if, 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 uh, you want, Mr. City Attorney, you want to slide over one to be Mr. City Manager?
You have so many hats, Mike.
But I think, you know, if, if staff thinks that they can come back with something, and you've heard our discussions today, I think, you know, I don't know if it's going to go anywhere, but we surely know it's not going to go anywhere if we don't try. So that's kind of how I look at it. You know, so, but I think a lot of this depends upon what staff can bring back, so we're comfortable.
Yes.
And I just want to remind you, the charter schools meeting at 5:30 in here.
So, um, Mr. City Manager, we got it all worked out.
Yep, we should do.
That's all it took?
Yep, that's it.
I knew that was the problem.
So in effect, he wants us to bring back a compromise.
Compromise millage rate?
City council wants us to-
Well, not a compromise millage rate, but a compromise to get us to that rollback rate, where, where we may all be comfortable. At least give us that opportunity. We still might be 4 to 4, I don't know. But I, I, I would have to say that, you know, there could be something else on the table. I mean, I'm okay with the, the 978, where it's at now. And the only thing that I was a little concerned, that you're going to take medians off the place altogether, you're going to take some of those other things off the plate altogether. I was under the assumption, in order to balance this year's budget, to get us to the rollback rate, it was going to be a one time, uh, to get it, get us to the balance, and then we'll revisit it next year, because maybe next year, we won't need some of the things that are in this year's budget.
Well, you can always revisit it next year. But typically, it comes off the table, and again, when we develop the budget for FY '24, you could always put it back in.
Yep, so.
But it is a recurring cost. Again, one of the reasons we chose the median program specifically is because up until we had this pool of one time dollars, we weren't getting a whole lot done with the annual appropriation of 312,000. And I remember when I first joined the city, going to my first C-TAC meeting, the main issue of discussion was the medians. And, and at the time, Mr. Klingon was the Public Works Director, and he was explaining to the C-TAC that there isn't a whole lot we can do with 312. And so he was just basically saving the money year after year, until he had enough, that we could actually go out and, and, and actually finish a median project. And so luckily, with the, you know, the extra fund balance that we had, we put 2 million in last year, 2 million in this year, we can really get some medians done.
Right.
But the 312 isn't going to buy you a whole lot. And that's why we offered it.
And I do think, and I'll just let everybody know today, I had a lunch meeting today with a business owner from Naples. And the first thing he said to me, and he's investing into our city, two different businesses in our city. And he's from Naples. And he said, the first thing he said is, I love Cape Coral, but you guys got to invest more into the appearance of the city, so.
Into what?
The appearance of the city. And I, you know, the 312, I agree with the city manager, is nowhere near enough. I did a study back in 2018, from Clearwater to Marco Allen. And our city puts the least amount of money, as far as a percentage, because everybody has a different budget.
Right.
Our city puts the least amount of money towards the beautification of our city than any other city on the West Coast here.
Do we know what our percentage is that we do? Is it less than 1%?
Well, if we got a billion dollar budget, and we're spending 312,000.
Yeah, so that's tiny little tick of a percent, okay, all right.
But you only get, like, when I was speaking the other day at the Florida League of Cities, if you don't change your approach, your results will never change.
That's true.
Yeah, but if we're going to-
If you want to change in results, you need to have a change in approach.
Can't keep doing the same thing over and over.
I want to stay at 5.5. If we're fighting over 4 million, and, and investors don't want to come because of medians, then why are we trying to go to a lower rate and take money away from the city?
Mr. Mayor, if, if I can just offer this one more time. If there is a willingness for compromise, and we consider a millage rate that is, comes in at 5.4631, you could buy back all of your service enhancements, with the exception of the fiber optics network conduit. And then we can have a discussion at a later date about funding that with one time monies, or funding that with debt. But I would, that would require both parties. And remember, in my opening comments, I mentioned compromise, and how difficult the budget process is, okay? And you ultimately get to a point where you have to have compromise. And so if there would be a willingness on both sides to meet in the middle at 5.4631, you can have your officers, you can have all of the other service enhancements that our office recommended, with the exception of the first year fiber, fiber optics conduit installation.
So that puts the compliance officer and all of that back in.
Correct.
And with, with respect to the, the fiber optics, we would look to do that, starting in 2024, with potentially doing a debt issue, and then financing it at about a million dollars a year for 20 years.
And we will continue to look for grants.
Yeah, always.
That's something I'd be willing to entertain.
I would be willing to entertain that. But it's going to take a whole lot more.
Mr. Mayor, I think that this is probably a good wrapping up point. And I think we should have the meeting next week and talk about this proposal. I don't think now is the time.
I don't think you want us to go to all that trouble if we're, we're not willing to move.
I see, okay.
Well, it's simple, we've already done the work.
Well, for the, for the new rate.
If you got to work, then why don't we have the meeting, bring that, and we'll have the discussion.
Can you hand it to us?
Oh, yeah, we'll send you the information earlier this week. We'll just send the-
That way we'll have it plenty of time.
Okay. Does that sound like a plan moving forward?
Yep. What time Tuesday?
I think it's scheduled for 2:00 PM.
2:00 PM.
Scheduled for 2:00 PM.
So are they still looking at that 4 million then, or did we just move to the middle rate?
No, no, I think, I think, I think it has to be both. I think they have to, they've kind of given us the-
I just want to make sure they know that. I don't know that we've given them clear direction.
Right.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think everything is still on the table. You're just bringing us, I, uh, another plan, so we'll have three.
With regards to the 4 million, though, I'm confused on the direction, because if, if nobody from the proposed rate is even accepting the 978, then how is getting them to dig $3 million deeper into cuts going to change their mind? That's where I, I mean, that's where I'm confused, unless I missed something with the-
No, because I asked that question, and they said they would bring that back.
Well, no, they would bring it back, but if nobody's even willing to, from the proposed side, accept the 978 in cuts, how are we going to?
Well, I have to see it and run it on my-
You've got two people here that just said we'd be willing to move from the proposed rate to the middle rate.
Well, no, that's different than the 4 million dollars that we've been talking about.
It'd be nice to hear too, from the other side, say, I'd be willing to move if we can't find all of us, or we can't find all of us agreeing, because I don't agree on the 978. So I'm coming up from that, saying I'm willing to give off the fiber optics, as long as we get everything else. So I, I would like to, yeah, before we waste the time and talk about it, at least one of the four that are, may be willing to entertain compromise, and I haven't heard that yet. So at this point, I don't really see a need for next week's meeting, and we're just going to waste more of the city manager's time and the financial director's time.
Didn't you suggest the compromise rate? Councilmember Welsh?
Actually, Councilmember Hayden wrote it up last week.
But today?
Nobody wanted, we just asked. I just asked if anyone was interested, I'd be willing to do it. And city manager already had, the only thing we'd be losing for the compromise rate, which is the middle between the two, is starting the fiber optics this year.
So-
Everything else is back in, all the officers, all the positions, everything that we have in the proposed rate. And two of us have come and said, we're okay with compromising, for the sake of saving time and not bringing out sleeping bags. But I haven't heard anyone from the other side willing to compromise. So at that point, I'd rather wait till September than come in and argue again for another two hours.
Now, the 978 reductions that you mentioned today still gets us to the rollback rate. And other than those items that are listed, everything else is pretty much still in the play. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me-
You lose everything on page five and six for the 978.
Except for the police items, everything on page five, to get to rollback, still comes off. Plus, the items on page six. That's how I'm able to balance the budget, get to rollback, and allow you to fund all of the police department's requested enhancements.
Correct, and there's things on page five that I still want, and there's things on page six that I still want. So if the only thing we lose to get to the compromise is the fiber optics, I'm willing to do that. But I'm not willing to lose pretty much anything else off that list.
So what you're saying, on page five and six, if we apply for the, uh, the 978, of course, that's page six. On page five, those items are still off the table as well. So it's the fiber optics, which I think we can fund in a one time expenditure. I think we could add the employee celebration as a one time. Probably the awards and furniture you could add as a one time for the year. I think the golf equipment you can add for one time, because with the monies that we're going to have left over, or the 13 million dollars that we have on the table to utilize, that's in a restricted fund that only we, the council, can utilize. And then we're getting, you're losing Pops Cafe, but we're still getting the detectives, oh, correct, that's listed at the bottom of page five.
Yes, you would get that under the, the balancing scenario to get you the 978.
So the only thing that you're really missing is a, that I think that we wouldn't have, is the senior management analyst and the Pops Cafe. I think a lot of those other items, we can fund one time expense off of our parking lot.
Well, no, you're also losing the medians, you're losing-
But I think all of that, you, I think the money's going to be there.
I do too.
The money will be there to fund all of that.
I do too.
So, I don't think so, but.
So how about if we, the other thing that we could do for next week's meeting is, if we go under that assumption, let's take a look at the parking lot items. Let's take a look at all those things, knowing that the 13 million dollars is in play, that's sitting there, and see if we can add back in these items.
I agree.
And then that way, you're happy with what you want. I think we can put the, uh, the fiber optics back in there. I think, I think we could add back in, uh, the 20, 10, 15,000 dollars for each organization. I think we could add the 312 back in the median as a one time thing.
They'll have to meet next week, because I have another meeting in 20 minutes.
Well, they're not going to meet until we, until we get done.
No, that's-
So, do you want to try to do that?
But at what rate? Are you still at the rollback rate? Are you proposing all this at the rollback rate?
That's basically the rollback rate, and we may get to that and say, no, there's no way you can fund all this other stuff that we're losing. But we don't know unless we have that discussion.
If you have an open mind on that particular point, the last thing that you said, which may cause you to change.
I always have an open mind.
You have what?
Well, you just said at the beginning of the meeting, you weren't going to change, that you were willing to stay here for a week. So if there's an opening there, then I can see a reason to meet.
Well, that's just not me, I mean, I'm only one of eight. Well, that's just not me. I mean, I'm only one of eight. So, you know.
I get it.
The exercise that I would like to do in our next meeting is plan on what the city manager presented us today and then look at those items, parking lot items included, and the items that we're losing, and see if we can add it back in.
I agree.
I don't know.
That would be a good use of the time.
Are we adding in one-time expenses into revolving expenses? I thought we heard and exhausted that three or four times. So if we look at the parking lot items to try to add in some of the stuff that they've identified as revolving items.
Well, the parking lot's all one-time items.
Yeah.
The only thing that's revolving is on page five.
You're going to pull stuff out of the revolving budget and make it a one-time expense?
Excuse me?
What are you talking about?
Just for this year?
Parking lot.
Well, if we take the $2.5 million out of fiber optics, you're really taking it out of the budget for the next four years.
Not one time, that's revolving for each year because it's year after year.
Revolving for five years in order.
Five years. What she said is they could do debt on, so he can pull that out, but he already pulled that out.
Parking lot stuff is one-time expenses.
All the parking lot's one-time. So if we're trying to pick things out of the revolving budget and move it to one-time, doesn't make sense.
And the reason you've got golf course equipment in there, there's, you know, we have in our operating and O and M budget, capital maintenance projects that even though they're, we know we're always replacing stuff at the golf course, right? And so we built in a certain amount of money just to do regular replacements. That's why that's in the O and M budget and it's not in the capital budget.
That's why it's not in the one-time funding, I think is what we're saying. It's recurring.
Recurring.
Right. Replacement of equipment at the golf course is a recurring expense.
Right.
Yeah, and I feel like we're spending all this money to make it nice and then we're.
So are we taking all of their monies away? And see, with that detail, we really don't know that.
All of the general, all of the golf course has been moved into the general fund. Nothing's been taken away. It's just all been moved into the general fund.
Yes.
And the golf course equipment is recurring replacement, basically. It's not a one-time expense.
And how much of a dollar amount is set aside for equipment?
I think under the program modification, they asked for, was it an additional $150,000?
Correct, yeah, right around there.
Right. It was an additional $150,000 that we.
So it's not all of the equipment, it's just that $150,000 that we've added into it.
Correct.
So there are still monies, and see, that's some of the detail that we don't have.
Correct. And so what we're talking about, like on page five, are enhancements. They're in addition to what they have today.
Well, could you give us a breakdown on page five on what they have now and what we're adding? The other detail that I would like to have before our next discussion is the 90-some million dollars in fund balance, exactly where that was applied to.
Okay.
A itemized breakdown.
When do you, I mean, I know we're taking the PD and E study off for now, but when do you meet?
Next week.
Before a meeting on Tuesday? No.
I can look and tell.
No, I'm just wondering if we would have.
Mayor, while you're looking, I want to make sure we're clear on that because the consensus was to just spend half of it, not take it off. We've never had a discussion about taking, as long as.
If you spend half and the county's willing to put in that.
Yes, I just want to make sure, yeah, if they can help fund the second half, that's great.
But they would fund the first half and we can fund the second half.
So just a reminder, remember, we're going to go to the county, but the funding will not be coming out of their general fund. It would be coming out of the unincorporated area. So I don't know if the unincorporated area has $2.5 million to work with. Actually, we're scheduled to meet with.
Tuesday at 11:30.
So before.
We're going to ask tax.
Wait, who us or them?
At them.
For the PD and E study?
We were going to use gas tax and we were going to ask them. You're saying that's going to come out of unincorporated funds?
Correct. Because that way, we would be essentially double taxing our residents if they use general fund for that.
No, but we were going to use gas tax money, we thought, maybe.
No, I.
They're paving out.
You said that we could.
You could, but I think the council direction loud and clear was that we would not use gas tax money.
Right, because it would take away our.
From UEP, correct.
Yeah, from UEP. Okay.
So are we meeting next week or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All righty. Anything else anyone wants to bring up? See and none, time and place, a future meeting. We have a special meeting, attorney-client session of the Cape Coral Cities. Council is scheduled for Wednesday, August 17, 2022, beginning at 1:00 PM here in council chambers. And we have a regular meeting. Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, August 17, 2022, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion for adjournment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.